Okay, good evening and welcome to the May 17th, 2016 regular meeting of the Newport News Public School Board. I want to welcome everybody who came. We have quite a crowd tonight. I see a lot of young faces and a lot of familiar folks here. Welcome. And welcome to those who are watching. We have a quorum present tonight of the school board. We have one absence. And we will proceed with tonight's meeting after I go through a couple of formalities. First, I'd like to welcome Councilwoman Sharon Scott, who's with us tonight. Welcome. Thank you for being here. We cannot do what we do without the support and the resources City Council provides. And we very much appreciate your presence. Thank you. As is our custom, we always open the meeting with two students leading us in opening with a pledge and then with an invocation, or vice versa. Tonight, we have Chase Arrington and Vianney Ramsey King, and they're from General Stanford Elementary. I'm going to call on Chase first to come forward and deliver the invocation. Chase, could you come forward? Don't be nervous. That's hard for us to do sometimes, but please, come to the podium. And first tell us your name and a little bit about yourself, and then lead us in the invocation.
My name is Chase Arrington. I'm from New Jersey and I'm now 11. My birthday was yesterday.
Awesome. Congratulations. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Okay. You can proceed with your invocation when you're ready.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the school board. My name is Chase Arrington once again. Thank you for inviting students to be a part of your meetings. I am a part of a great military family and a great school community at General Stanford Elementary. My family and I are from New Jersey and have been stationed at Ford Houston for three years. While I like most of being a part of a military family, I'm learning from my family members, like my dad. What I like about the great state of Virginia is that there are a lot of amazing books that I like, like Bush Gardens. I'm in the fifth grade. I like when we get to listen to my teacher read because she picks interesting books. You should see our library at our school. We have a great chance to visit. When I grow up, I want to be a video game designer. And at school, I know I must work hard to be ready to reach that goal.
Terrific. And we want to see you come back in future years, and we look forward to you leading us in other things.
Well, next time, this July, I'm going to be at Hawaii.
Take a tough assignment.
I know. What if I move? I'll be like, no, I want to stay with my friends. I have a lot of friends here.
Thank you for being with us tonight. Thank you, Chase. Oh, you've got a poem. Okay. I'm sorry to cut you off.
"Dandelion, the official flower of the..." Well, the poem is "Dandelion," the official flower of the military child. "Dandelion, you're like me, so I drift to ride the breeze. Drifting here and settling there, to grow as if you have no care. Only those like you will know the sudden rush to rise and go. On any current you will flow, on any weather you will blow. In any sea, on any tide, on any ground you will abide. And you never do decide just where you'll go or how you'll ride. Around the world, among all kinds, flying with no time that minds. Always leaving friends behind, trying not to show your mind. Dandelion, I'm like you, of my future I have no clue. I put down roots that have no glue, so I'll move to somewhere new."
Thank you. I'm glad we got to get the poem. And good luck in Hawaii. Sounds like an upgrade to me. Vianney, would you come forward? Tell us a little about yourself, and then you know how to lead us in the pledge. You have to tell us to stand up and pledge.
Hello, my name is Vianney Ramsey King. I am in second grade at General Stanford Elementary School. I love to do math when I'm in school. I love my military family. Did you know military families have to adjust when a loved one is deployed? One day, I plan to be a veterinarian. I prepare every day by having a great attitude and doing my chores. Will you please stand for the pledge allegiance?
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now you may be seated.
Now, Vianney, that is leadership. Thank you. And I'd like everybody who's here from representing their families to stand and let us give them a round of applause and recognition. It takes a lot of work to raise such strident young folks. Thank you. And I'd like to also recognize the principal, Diane Willis, and anybody else from General Stanford. Thank you for what you do on a regular basis, both during normal school hours and after, to raise such fine examples, bring them before us. Thank you. All right. We will move on to board recognitions, and the superintendent will lead us.
Well, tonight, we have a whole group of state award-winning young people with us, and we also have a national award-winning teacher. So we've got a lot of really good things to honor tonight. So Ms. Price is going to help us.
Good evening. I have the privilege of presenting this month's school board recognitions. "Aspirations in Computing" is a talent development pipeline initiative of the National Center for Women in Information Technology, designed to increase women's participation in computing careers. Each year, the organization selects deserving educators who encourage girls' interests and participation in technology pursuits through the Aspirations in Computing Educator Awards. Several hundred nominations were considered this year, and 215 were selected for recognition. Newport News Public Schools is home to one dedicated honoree representing Virginia and Washington, DC. Chanel Callwood, the program administrator of the Governor's STEM Academy and university magnet at Heritage High School. Ms. Callwood, would you please come forward? Ms. Callwood has served as the first robotics coach at Heritage High School and has taught computer programming, video game design, animation, 3D modeling courses, all within the modeling and simulation strand of the Governor's STEM Academy. Before pursuing a career in education, Ms. Callwood worked in the information technology industry for five years. She was selected for this honor because she is an advocate for STEM education. She is acknowledged for her strong commitment to ensuring that underrepresented groups pursue careers in technology and computing. She also serves as a mentor for young ladies through Million Women Mentors and Girls with Engineering Minds in Shipbuilding, or GEMS. Ms. Callwood, congratulations on this well-deserved honor. Joining her this evening is her principal, Shamika Gerald. Thank you for joining us this evening. Our next honorees are Odyssey of the Mind State Champions. Odyssey the Mind is a problem-solving competition that promotes creativity by challenging teams to solve problems. Participating students select a problem, create a solution, and then bring their solution to the competition. The teams spend weeks creating a solution. During the competition, the team has a certain number of minutes to present their solution, and the team also has to present it with a spontaneous problem at the competition. By working together, the students learn teamwork, appreciation and understanding of others, and that a group is a more powerful thinking force than an individual. Tonight, we're recognizing two Newport News teams who earned top honors at the State Odyssey of the Mind Competition. The Woodside High School team earned first place in the Something Fishy Problem. Tonight, several members of the team have joined us. Would you please come forward as I call your name? Amaya Jones? Let's give her a round of applause. Margaret Klug? Thomas Scharsek? Katherine Thompson? And Katherine Denny, who is unable to join us. Woodside High's team successfully portrayed this Something Fishy Problem that challenged the students to design and operate a technical solution that stimulates multiple styles of fishing. A fisher character had to work from a designated area to catch three different objects that were outside of that area. The catch had to be on the move and include something expected, something unexpected, and a new discovery. The team's performance also had to include a change of weather and a humorous character that portrays a potential catch and avoids being caught by the fisher. Congratulations. I'd like to also recognize the team from Warwick High School who captured second place in their division in the Furs, Fens, Feathers, and Friends Problem. Please join me in recognizing Parker Adams? Alexa Gupta? Eleanor Lawrence? Hannah Obershaw? Noah Pasmino? Zawadi Stiff? And Sahara Swinton Kirkley? Over here, Sahara. This way. In the Furs, Fens, Feathers, and Friends Problem, Warwick High's team was challenged to create and present a humorous performance depicting problem solving from the perspective of three animals that had to help a stranger, help each other, and solve a problem that threatens the survival of all animals. Now, for an extra twist, during the performance, the animals had to sing and dance and show curiosity, sympathy, frustration, and joy. So the members of both of these teams are now headed to World Finals later this month at Iowa State University. So we wish them much success. Thank you and congratulations. As they make their way back to their seats, I'd like to acknowledge their family members that are joining them this evening. Would you please stand to be recognized? Thank you. I'd also like to recognize their coaches, Megan Legwick from Woodside High School. Thank you. And Laura Nelson Rogers and Rachel Boag. Hope I pronounced that correctly. Warwick High School. Administrators are also joining them tonight, so thank you very much for joining us, as well as our Odyssey the Mind organizer, Kim Beckerdite, supervisor of gifted services. Gifted service. Thank you. We wish you well. Our next honorees from Menchville are the Virginia High School League State Champions. These super athletes swam their way to the Virginia High School League Group 5A State Championship title in swimming earlier this year, earning the first swimming title in the school history, the first team swimming title in school history. Please join me in recognizing our Menchville Superstars. Carter Ashley, who's a diver. Jordan Alborg, diver. Brandon Burnick, swimmer. Swimmer Jordan Duncan. Ricky Marsteller, diver. Miles McAllister, swimmer. Swimmer Alex Moore. Niko Nimsef, swimmer. And Landon Potter, swimmer. Griffin Younger, swimmer. And Cade Younger, swimmer. The swim and dive team before you finished with 272 points, ahead of Princess Anne, the team that beat them in the South Regional Meet. So they got the last word on that one. They also earned individual and relay events, recognition in individual and relay events as well. Alex Moore placed first in the state in the 50-yard freestyle and the 100 freestyle and was a member of the 200-yard medley relay and the 200 freestyle relay teams. He would have earned more, but swimmers are limited to two individual and two relay events at state events. So congratulations, Alex. The 200 medley relay team of Jordan Duncan, Griffin Younger, Cade Younger, and Alex Moore also won the Group 5A State Title in one minute and a little over 35 seconds. So congratulations. And the 200 freestyle relay team of Niko Nimsef, Cade Younger, Jordan Duncan, and Alex Moore also earned state honors as well. This team went into the state meet riding much postseason success. They placed in the Penn South Conference 10 Meet and then second in the 5A South Regional Meet. So again, we congratulate this team for bringing home the state championship to Menchville and to Newport News schools. Congratulations, Sharon. I'd also like to acknowledge their family members joining us tonight. Would you please stand to be recognized? Also like to acknowledge their coach, Mackenzie Smith. And their principal, Bobby Suri. Thank you for joining us. Each year, the Virginia Music Educators Association recognizes music programs that have earned superior ratings throughout its assessments. The Blue Ribbon School Award is given to the top-performing schools in this state after reviewing each school's band, chorus, and orchestra. All ensembles must receive a superior rating to qualify for the award. For the second consecutive year, Menchville High School was named a Blue Ribbon School. Accepting this honor tonight are the music educators at Menchville. Deborah Sarvey, band director and lead fine arts teacher. Ms. Sarvey? Jennifer Jarrett, choral director at Menchville. And Anna Moyer, the orchestra director. In order to be recognized for the Blue Ribbon Award, the top-performing groups must perform two pieces from approved graded music lists. Each ensemble at Menchville performed well, earning superior ratings and the opportunity to be named a Blue Ribbon School. We also want to take a moment to acknowledge some of the talented musicians that helped earn the state recognition this year, and they were named to an All-Virginia Ensemble. To reach this accomplishment, high school students must audition and earn a top chair or place in a district event, which makes them eligible to audition for an All-Virginia Performance Ensemble. Five Menchville High School students were named tops in the state. Please come forward for recognition. Named to the All-Virginia Band, Reese Edwards. Reese plays the trumpet. Maya Fisher, our clarinet player. Jack Holland, the French horn. And Lauren Weaver, euphonium. And named to the All-Virginia Chorus is Rose Rizzi, who is unable to join us tonight, but again, we congratulate her as well. So again, we congratulate our musicians this evening for the All-Virginia Ensemble and for the Blue Ribbon Award from Menchville High School. Thank you, and again, congratulations. I also like to take a moment to acknowledge their family members. Would you please stand? Thank you for joining us tonight. And our supervisor of fine arts, Pat Franklin, and principal Bobby Suri. Thank you. That concludes the recognition portion of our meeting. At this time, we'll take about an eight-minute break, so the honorees and their families may leave if they choose to do so. During this time, our viewing audience will have an opportunity to view this month's school board spotlight. So we'll stand in recess for about eight minutes. Thank you.
This is my future.
This is my future.
My future.
My future.
I'm building my future.
Every day.
And while many help shape this future.
Parents, teachers.
Friends, mentors.
This future will always be mine.
So I take ownership.
I take ownership.
Responsibility.
And I will seize every opportunity.
To make the most of my future.
And right now.
Right now.
Right now.
I'm building my future.
I'm building my future.
And becoming college, career, and citizen-ready.
In Newport News Public Schools.
In Newport News Public Schools, I'm empowered and encouraged to be successful academically and socially. Through a variety of youth development opportunities, I am growing as a leader and a citizen. The teachers I've had over the years are a huge reason for my success, and many of them go an extra mile every day. When they're not teaching me about math, English, and science during the school day, they're teaching me about life after school. Clubs with a focus on mentoring create a positive and supportive environment for students to succeed. To have my teachers invest in me as a person and not just as a student is so rewarding. It motivates me to work harder in school and at home.
In the example our teacher set forth has inspired me and many of my friends to pass it on to our own classmates. In both middle and high schools, we have a great opportunity to mentor our peers, including younger students. We're able to share our experiences, studying tips, and other strategies for succeeding in school. We even mentor some of the youngest students in our city at the early childhood centers in elementary schools. Whether we're reading a book together or just sharing interest, mentoring is rewarding for everyone. The younger students get some extra attention while also looking forward to some fun experiences as they grow up. And for us older students, we really enjoy the benefit of giving back and having the opportunity to visit our old schools and catch up with some favorite teachers.
And what a great city we live in, where our community gets involved in mentoring also. Volunteers from the military, local businesses, community partners, churches, and even colleges help out every week. These individuals and teens bring their life, career, and academic experiences to the table. Sometimes, these connections create internships, job shadowing opportunities, summer jobs, or even future careers. Sometimes, we get to work alongside these remarkable people, learning practical skills hand in hand.
These partners and mentors coming into our schools have inspired us to give back to the community. Get ready for a pretty extensive list year because students in Newport News never take a break. Every day, my classmates can be found donating food or money to those in need in Hampton Roads, using our art skills to raise money for local organizations, visiting retirement communities to spread some holiday cheer, collecting clothes, jackets, and shoes during the cold winter months, digging deep to keep our neighborhoods looking good, ringing bells during the holidays for the Salvation Army, plunging into freezing cold water to raise money for Special Olympics Virginia, creating custom holiday cards for servicemen and women, spending time with wounded soldiers who fought bravely for our country, rebuilding computers to give away to families, or volunteering our time at local races to raise money for a number of causes.
And when we're back at school, we always find ways to help out. We collect and recycle cans, plant seasonal flowers, and do what we can to make our schools look beautiful. We watch each other's backs, reminding our friends to buckle up in a car.
Here's what it all boils down to, whether we're being mentored or offering the mentorship.
Whether we're collecting money or dishing out warm meals.
It might be volunteering on the weekend or extra hours after school.
It's seen through our actions.
It's how and what we're taught.
It's part of who we are now and in the future.
It all boils down to leadership.
We're not becoming leaders.
We are leaders.
We are leaders.
We are leaders.
Right now and every day.
Every club we're a member of, every adult that inspires us, every choice we make is helping us to become confident leaders. Many times, it's my friends and classmates that come up with these great ideas to make our schools and communities better. We've been empowered by the teachers and staff in our schools to think creatively, take initiative, and make a real impact in our schools. Through our involvement in clubs, athletics, and community service, we've learned responsibility, respect, collaboration, and perseverance.
We are leading.
We are leading.
We are serving.
We are serving.
We're achieving every day.
And we are.
College, career, and citizen-ready.
The First Lady of the Commonwealth, Dorothy McAuliffe,
visited Lee Hall Elementary in April to celebrate the month of the military child. As the mother of a United States Marine, Dorothy McAuliffe was in Hampton Roads to promote Purple Up Day and show her support for military children. The color purple is used to honor military children since this is the color that represents the combined branches of the military. Because of the rich military history in our area, over 3,000 students in Newport News Public Schools are military children. And at Lee Hall, 32% of the more than 600 students belong to military families. To help support these students and allow them to succeed academically and socially, Lee Hall employs a military support counselor. Alicia Laitel helps students and families transition smoothly to the area, hosts several events during the school year to support military families, and pays special attention to students whose parents... to students whose parents are deployed overseas. During her visit to Lee Hall, Dorothy McAuliffe was greeted by a team of military-connected students who led her around the school. In the gymnasium, soldiers from Fort Eustis were working with kindergarten students with warm-up exercises and a fun obstacle course. In the classroom, McAuliffe spoke to children about which branches their parents served and fielded questions from the young students. She also made time to read them the story Night Song, a beautifully illustrated story filled with adventure and bravery. McAuliffe enjoyed visiting Lee Hall's Wall of Heroes, decorated with photos of the military-connected students at the school. And the visit wrapped up with the First Lady offering a formal proclamation to Superintendent Dr. Ashby Kilgore, Lee Hall Principal Glenda Walter, and the students in attendance that
Okay, welcome back to the May 17, 2016 regular meeting of the School Board. We're going to continue with our agenda in a second. First, I'd like to point out that following our work session, we went into executive session, and that we've recessed that, and we will continue that following this meeting. So I'm going to move on to another recognition, and that is, we have with us tonight a fantastic former student of Newport News Public Schools, Ms. Aleah Mead, who served last year. Aleah, where are you? Aleah was our student School Board Representative last year, and she was fantastic to work with. And she's now finished up her first year at Howard University. And welcome back. And I think that's, is that her mother there? Hello, Mom? Thank you for coming back, Aleah. I think it's so easy not to do that, but it means a lot to have you with us tonight. Thank you. All right, we're at the point in our meeting where we have the opportunity for public comments, and we welcome anybody who wants to come and share with us your comments or your thoughts. I'd ask that if you haven't done it already, that you fill out one of the cards that's on the table out there that looks like this, and get it to Ms. Brooks, and then we'll make sure that we can work you in. I have 11 cards with us, and we have about three minutes allotted for each person to come forward and talk. So in our 30 minutes that we have for public comments, it looks like we have enough time, so if everybody could just absorb the three-minute limit. And there's a light over here. When it turns yellow, you have a minute left, and when it's red, the time is up. And we'd like you to conclude your comments. All right, the first card I have this evening is Councilwoman Sharon Scott. Okay, it does say here that she had to leave early, so we'll be sure to contact her and thank her for coming to our meeting tonight. All right, next card I have is Mr. Victor Paul. If you'd come forward, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, I have several questions for the board this evening. First and foremost, what does the school do with children to prevent bullying? For example, during the ninth-grade orientation, is it like a parent-teacher night where it's discussed besides the student handbook? What role does the guidance counselors play in the day-to-day interactions with students? How many guidance counselors are there to each school? Does the guidance counselors have the authority to seek the help of outside forces that doesn't actually include law enforcement? What actions are taken when someone has several complaints of bullying against them? We've heard the statement in the past that kids will be kids, and that is correct, but at what point will adults be adults in position of authority? Are the teachers who turn a blind eye to bullying held accountable, and if so, how? Does the school system believe they are allocated sufficient funds from city council to combat bullying within our public schools? Besides the negative consequences such as, excuse me, consequences such as school suspension, in-school suspension, and expulsion from school? Are there other mechanisms in place that will help students in regards to bullying? Because we see how well the adult correctional system has worked for similar situations. Sadly, bullying is not a question of if, but when. You know, we all know it's going to happen. It's our society nowadays. We can look at the presidential election that's going on. That's one big bully at the pulpit, if you ask me. We, as adults personally, we have a duty to our students and our kids as citizens growing up to teach them how to be a citizen in our everyday lives. It's more to education than just math, reading, science, arithmetic. I will give you that. Does it start at home? Yes. But we also need our school administrators, teachers, and everything like that reinforcing the things that we're doing at home to be done at school. If people are just turning a blind eye to the things that's going on, our society is never going to reach the depths or the heights that we know that it can't reach. So as a parent of a young man that is currently in the Newport News Public School System, I would like to see a whole lot more done, not just in regards to reading, writing, and arithmetic, but how to make these students better citizens once they graduate from high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Next card, Mr. Aubrey Jones. Aubrey Jones?
Good evening. I'd like to be brief. I represent the family of Deja Jones. Deja Jones committed suicide partially due to bullying at Woodside High School. On 4/18, me and the family went to Woodside to try to seek answers as to what may have happened or questions of what may have happened. These are questions that we answer to principal. Questions, who bullied her? Questions, what counseling programs are set up? Question, do you have grievance counselors available? Question, why is there such a history of bullying and there being nothing done about it? Question, how did the counselor not see the signs with her grades dropping? Ask also, is there a rights responsibilities handbook? Do you still have it? We asked about parent-child anti-bullying form to be signed the first day of school. The results of this, we were told in the exact words of the principal, "I feel attacked." This is exactly what the principal of Woodside High School said to us as a grieving family on the Monday after the said day. So we fast-forward you to yesterday, which would be 5/16. That would be a month after Deja's passing. We buried her a week after her passing on a Saturday. We would like to understand why there are five guards, two 2,100 students at Woodside High School. We want to understand why we haven't been reached out to at all as a family that's lost a 14-year-old freshman at UALL school system, and not even so much as a sympathy letter has come to us from UALL at all. So we feel as if we have just, she's just been thrown back in the water. It's just like a member of the system. That's just that we don't get any sort of word or any sort of thing. Not saying this is completely your blame, just saying that if somebody had passed away under my control, I would at least have some sort of empathy to come out there and at least say, "I apologize for your loss," at the least. We then fast-forward, like I said, so we're here to ask you, what bullying programs are set up? We're here to ask you, do you have grievance counselors? Not just the week it happens and the week it's after, so schools just back to normal. Because a week later, these kids were not over it. A week later, these kids just saw a 14-year-old laid in a casket, which some of us as adults didn't live to see until we were adults. And then, why is there such a history of bullying in your school system and there being nothing done about it? And we're asking, once again, why is there no empathy for us? We've sat and waited quietly for a month, and we've heard nothing. We did it to buy the books. We did it to sit and chill and wait for you to come to us, and it's obvious that you would come to us. And I believe it was this gentleman right here who chose to say in front of 500 grieving kids, and I won't have to quote, I can just have the sound bite on my phone.
The betterment of his last eight years is on YouTube. You can go look at it, right? So you'll know what's going on in the vision.
This is what he had to say to the kids to help bullying. There's the school board meeting every Monday at the thing. Go on YouTube, and go, you can go look at it, you know? That's what he says to crying kids a few days after this child has passed. So at this time, we are not satisfactory with the results. We will exercise political will in the election of 2018. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Jones. Mr. Andrew Shannon?
Good evening. My name is Andrew Shannon. I represent the organization founded by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. First, I want to offer our condolences to the Marine family. Our leader was lost through assassination and violence. And so, we're here to say to you, I had a conversation with one of your school board members today, and he said that, Mr. Shannon, I'm in Bible study. But what he did was, he took time to listen. So what I'm asking you this evening to do is take time to listen. I want you to listen to the voices of the community, listen to the voices of the people. I want to congratulate those who were victorious in the election a couple of weeks ago. You see, our organization is responsible for the diversity that you have right there on this school board. Because members of our organization marched five days, 10 miles per day, so you can have the diversity that you have. It's because of the organization led by Dr. King that we have the diversity in the school system with the staff. So we want you to know, we want to thank you, Dr. Kilgore. I appreciate your leadership, because you have been very responsive to the citizens. For promotion, this is from sounds, for promotion coming neither from the east nor from the west, nor from the south. But God is the judge. He put down one, and he set up another. He put down one, which was the vice mayor, and he set up another, Mr. B. Two, Marcellus Harris, a youth pastor at First Baptist. He's going to be on city council, and we're looking forward to his arrival. You serve with distinction, my good friend Teddy. Board Member Hicks and Mr. Scott, we appreciate your leadership. As you make your transition, God has put up some more. Mr. Marvin Harris is in the audience, and John Healy, one of our members who we nurtured. But if God shall indeed obey his voice and do all that I speak, then I will be an enemy to thy enemies and an adversary to thy adversaries. We're here today to say, we want the name of John Bankhead McGruder removed from the public schools. He was a terrorist. He represented slavery, raping men and women. He went for diversity for all of us to be here today. And not only do we want the name removed, but we want a public hearing, such as what we have in Houston tomorrow. A public hearing on the renaming of the building. See, that's the process. So we want a process of renaming. And then we want you to listen to the voices of some names who you may not be a part of the status quo. See, we want transparency. We want to reject the status quo, and we want inclusion. So I'm saying to you, we want some names of some local civil rights. And I'm talking about some who's once to the city, so that you can have public transportation for everybody in the schools. Mr. Lewy Depru. Another one is Reverend Dr. Marcellus Harris. You may not find him in the historical archives, but we know the history. So what I'm saying to you today, somebody said, now, we said it in 2014. Listen, because change is coming. Change happened in 2016.
Mr. Shannon, I need you to bring this to a conclusion. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate that. I'm getting ready to bring it home. We are not advocating erasing history. It is important for all Americans to appreciate the history of this great country. That is the primary reason why we want to recognize Confederate generals such as John Bankhead McGruder and others. Let them be recognized in the Virginia Living Museum at Huntington Park. But take their names off of the schools. And we're asking, I say we're asking now, but the next time will be demanded. We want a public hearing on the names. We want John Bankhead McGruder, the Confederate terrorist, name removed from the school. We have our kids honoring a Confederate person, and then he fought against the United States. Did you teach him that in history? Did you teach him that he went to fight in the United States Mexican War? He fought against the United States. Did he teach that history? So before you challenge us about honoring local civil rights individuals, I'll leave you with this. For far too long, we have observed those who sought to oppress and glorify those who start, you have, you have sought to glorify those who have oppressed. But yet, when we, when we work hard to empower those individuals who are divorced, divorceless, then you subject them to extraordinary ridicule and scrutiny. So I'm gonna leave you, yes, I'm gonna leave you now, but I'm gonna let, I'm finishing up, my friend. You don't know we.
What I'd like to suggest is that the superintendent and the staff, take your recommendation, and then we come to a point where we can have such a public discussion about.
And we can have dialogue.
I talked with Mr. Shannon yesterday, and our staff has too. He is aware that when the new school opens at the old McGruder site, it will be called the Discovery STEM Academy, and the McGruder name will not be on that school. So that is, that is already the committee that helped us design the new school.
What committee? We want to know what committee, because we want, we're talking about.
We can surely talk about that.
Mr. Shannon, let us move that to another meeting discussion, and we can discuss that. So there are many other cards and people who want to speak, so please, let us move on.
I'm only hearing this because I haven't seen any public hearings on the discussion of the removal of the Confederate name.
That was about three years ago.
Okay, but now, fast-forward now. Fast-forward now, we want a public hearing on the names of the rename. Not just what was came up, we want new names.
And let me assure, let me give you an assurance that.
I'll be assured if you don't hear the voices.
Well, I want to give you an assurance that the School Board, as a group, has to officially vote on the naming of a school, so that that will be a public, publicly heard issue. So please, let us move on to the next speaker.
I'm moving on. I want you to look at these pictures of slavery. Let it marinate.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Next, Mr. Chris Lee. You could come forward, please. Welcome. Good evening.
Good evening. My daughter's a student at Woodside and also experiences bullying. I went to Woodside multiple times to talk to the principal and administrators, and kind of seems like they keep giving the runaround. So she knows the names of the students. She's been told that if she gets in another altercation, she's going to be expelled. She, but I tell the administrators that you cannot have an altercation with one person. The other students were not suspended, and my daughter is being blocked off from going to certain areas of the school. The cafeteria at lunchtime, they follow her around. They wait outside her class. They wait outside of her classrooms and like, um, one of the members of the Jones family said, at some point in time, you know it's gonna happen. So, I just ask for some action to happen. I mean, whether students can get in trouble for making threats, I feel like at least something could happen as long as bullying should have the same type of consequences, if not legal action. So, I don't want something to happen and I need for somebody to stand up and do something. And that's, that's really all I have.
Thank you. We'll be in touch with you. Okay, next I have, Ms. Valerie Jones. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Valerie Jones. I am the great aunt of, um, Deja Jones, um, my niece who is no longer with us. Um, you know, we are a peaceful family. Um, and of course, I guess as most parents, adults, you know, you see things on the news, you see tragic things happening to people, but until it hits home with you, only then do you begin to look around and to see that this is on the level of an epidemic. I mean, you hear of students being bullied, but the one thing, you know, our loss is extremely tragic. But what it has done is that it has opened up doors and avenues for literally hundreds of other students that have gotten in touch with us, with our family. You know, we have several people that are managing emails and, you know, Facebook with all of the children and not just children who are currently in school. You know, yes, Deja was at Woodside, so that's only our frame of reference. I'm not saying that Woodside is the only school that has bullying. You know, bullying is different than what it was in my generation. Um, it seems to be more like on a gang type level versus, you know, everybody had one bully in the neighborhood, in the school or whatever. That's not the case anymore. Um, so when I opened up saying that we're a family of peace, we're trying to regain our peace that has been stolen from us. We're not saying that Woodside is, you know, the only reason that, um, they, you know, there were a number of things, but whatever happened to Deja that Friday night at school, at Woodside, you know, was the trigger for her. It left her feeling that she didn't have any other options. No child, you know, I admire the accomplishments that we heard today, you know, from the second grader on up to the high school students. That's the path that we had Deja on. That's the path that we have all of our children on. I have a grandson now here in Newport News Schools. So, I would like to see, um, the Deja situation is not swept under the carpet. We don't know what happened. We haven't, as my son said, we don't know what happened. We don't know what is going on. We're not accusing anyone of anything because we don't know the inner workings of anything that may be going on, but we have not been told anything. So as a family, we would like to have our peace back. We would like for those of you who are in a position to be able to make changes and we're willing to make changes as well. But if you would just, you know, hear what we're saying and please react. Thank you.
Can we hear you? Thank you. Welcome this evening.
Uh, thanks, sir. Thanks, sir. Um, seems like the Jones trail here, I've met most of the Joneses and again, my sympathy goes to Deja Jones's entire family. Uh, my name's Terry Jones. I'm the CEO and founder of Brothers on the Block and of all the high schools that I am intimately woven into, it just happens to be Woodside. And so when I heard about Deja, my heart, my heart cracked. Uh, I felt it was under my watch, even though our mentoring program deals with the young men. We have a fabulous relationship with, uh, principal hopping all the way down to, uh, the custodians. What we found as we have been in high school, in school suspension, is that the kids find that we're like a bridge, even between their conversations with the parents, which they don't give up. I have two daughters, so I know they don't tell me everything. And then the teachers and even the administrators. And so as a grassroots nonprofit organization, my, my challenge to you fine gentlemen and women is that funding, funding from the school districts at whatever level that can be put aside for grassroots organizations with proven track records. I didn't wake up after Deja, uh, went to be with the Lord and decided to do this. We've been doing this since 2013. And so we have a track record of caring about the kids in Woodside High School and the other entities in which we do what God has called us to do. So my challenge to the school board is to, with recognized, recognized institutions that have proven track records of caring about the children that are not driven by incidents to show up and try to solve problems, uh, to, to make room for us, uh, to, to aid us in our desire and our passions, to aid you, to aid the principals, the administrators, the counselors, the teachers. Because these kids want to talk to somebody and they have found our ear to be a place of safety and, and that is what I wanted to come to share with you guys today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Hello. Thank you for giving me this opportunity today to address you all on this very serious matter that's happening in our very own community. As you've walked in today, you might have noticed I am wearing an orange ribbon. Orange ribbons are a symbol of awareness and today by proudly wearing my orange ribbon, I am choosing to take a stand against bullying. My name is Alicia Potter. I am a 13-year-old seventh grader at Crinton Middle School. I have been bullied more times than I can count. I took the initiative to get involved and become an ambassador for Champions Against Bullying. As an advocate for Champions Against Bullying, I've seen tons of bullying in my school. I've stepped in and stood up for my friends and students that I don't even know. I have put myself between bullying to take a stand because no one deserves to be bullied. I know firsthand how bullying feels and it breaks my heart to see other people get treated that way. Everyone deserves to be treated with respect and like a champion. Bringing this program into schools will show and help kids to become relentless against bullying and take a stand. Champions Against Bullying will not only help the students, but teach adults how to stop bullying in its tracks. We need to educate and encourage the entire school community to get involved, to reduce school bullying and youth violence. Our schools need to develop an anti-bullying policy and fair consequences for noncompliance to further magnify and validate that youth violence is a serious matter and is unacceptable. Not knowing is no longer an excuse. Being involved in Champions Against Bullying has made me feel like I have the strength to stand up for people that I see needs help. Unfortunately, we have lost very precious lives at the cost of bullying. My deepest condolences to their families and friends. If we get this program into schools, I feel it would be very successful and create a better, safer learning environment. Learning is impaired when kids are scared. Scared learners are poor learners. Help me put the brakes on bullying in Newport News Public Schools.
Ms. Uganda Sample Jones?
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Kilgore, respected school board members. My heart goes out to the family of Deja. I can't imagine losing my young ladies to bullying. Something that can very much be prevented. Um, as you stated, I am Uganda Sample Jones. I'm the founder of My Empowerment. Um, with me, I did bring Alicia, the champion, uh, the actual, excuse me, the ambassador of Champions Against Bullying, along with several other concerned parents. We represent only a handful of parents who are frustrated and fed up with the lack of procedures set up for bullying in our schools. In most cases, our children spend more time with educators versus their parents, which shows it must be a group effort. Studies have shown us one out of three children are bullied every seven minutes of the school hour. Eighty-five percent of bullying incidents have no intervention. I am taking a stand for children like my son who fell capel to help a fellow classmate with a group of kids, um, that were humiliating him in a hall, in a hallway. With no school officials around, these kids continued to degrade and pointed them to the point that it came to a push and shove. At the end of the incident, all the children were suspended. Um, my question is, where are the adults? Where is the prevention in the school? And why are those children left to advocate for themselves? I'm asking Newport News Schools to consider implementing Champions Against Bullying in our schools. They have a developed, they have developed a curriculum that's 60 to 70, um, 90 to minutes long that trains our students and our parents, as well as all of our educators to empower and take a stand against bullying.
Brenda Talton?
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Talton and I am the grandmother of Deja Jones. What you see standing before you is a woman in pain. Pain that I can't even explain to you because I hurt on different levels. I hurt because I lost my first grandchild. And I hurt because I watched my child hurt down to the core of his being. It's real. I never thought in all of these years, when I went to school, I never, I, I didn't have one classmate that was bullying. I asked myself every day, why? I don't understand. God, please help me. I don't understand why my 14-year-old granddaughter is gone. Someone that had dreams, someone that made you laugh, just was full of life is gone. But then I was like, in order for me to heal, I have to move forward, but I don't know how. But I will say that my granddaughter's death will not be in vain because sadly, she left a whole lot of Dejas. She left them at Woodside. She left them on the West Coast, East Coast. She left them in other countries. But Deja, my Deja, she's not coming back here. But the Dejas that we left here, parents, the reliability starts with, with us. We have to make sure that our children are all right. If we have to get in their face and ask them if they are, if they're okay, so what? We have to make them listen. Because see, when I walked away from her grave, I felt helpless. I didn't know what to do. My heart is so heavy, but I don't want this to happen to someone else. It doesn't feel good. It's not a, it's not a good thing. But I thank everyone, the thousands and thousands of people that have reached out to our family. Almost a thousand people that attended her homegoing service. This is helping us more than you'll ever know. But the fight didn't stop on April 23rd when Deja, when they put Deja in the ground. The fight will continue on, but we have to keep fighting because if we stop, no one's gonna listen. Thank you.
I don't know if I've got this right, but Barbara Ripit, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, Barbara Pitt.
Oh, don't worry about it. Ma'am, I just want to tell you, sorry for your loss, okay? I am from Birmingham, Alabama, so you know, I wanted to make sure I tell her sorry for her loss. How you doing, Mr. Kilgore? You know, I respect you. Hello, how you doing? And I wanted to, my first thing I wanted to say was, it was two things that I put up there.
Well, we've got sports students, GPA and school board, and I can't read them.
I think it's, um, school board elections.
Election, okay.
Okay. Um, it was two, um, comments that I wanted to touch on was school board elections. One of the things that I wanted to touch on was the school board elections for people that are running for school board elections. I know you have a tidbit of when somebody is running for elections, that you have a form that they, that the person that is running, the new person that is running, they have a form that they go through, that a new member, if they running, people that want to get to know that person, you have a form that they go through by their name, they say who they are and it's like a little form. I think that that needs to be a little bit more markable because it's not really says a lot about that person. Because when I went to go to vote, I kind of really didn't have too much to pick between the person, if you understand what I'm saying. It really didn't give a whole lot to me. I think that it needs to be a little bit more heightened and whatnot. That's just my opinion and whatnot. We give a whole lot to, um, like the lady said, from the two-year-old to the seniors that are getting awards and we can do a lot for people that are getting honored. So when we get ready to pick somebody to sit up here to represent for two years, I think we need to spend a little bit more time to give them maybe a little bit more time to highlight their, um, background or whatever about themselves in elections. That was one thing. Then secondly, and what I was talking about, sports athletes for, I think it's a 2.2 for the school system or 2.2, 2.3 grade point average for an athlete to play any sports in the school system. One of the things that I was wanting to say about that is, that is true. But when it comes to graduating after high school, it's the biggest problem is when you are a good athlete, when it's time to go off to college, you are a good athlete, you need a 3.0 or 3.5 to take a scholarship. So most of the good athletes leave and go to prep schools. When my son, Louis Freeman, in the 10th grade, 13 athletes left and went to prep schools. And he went to Fort Union and now he's going off to Kansas and he's going to Kansas Yew. Thank you. And you can pass him down.
Thank you, Ms. Pitt. Thank you for coming tonight. Curtis Harris?
Good evening.
Good evening. Dr. Kilgore, how you doing? Well, I am the executive director and co-founder of Original Brothers Mentoring Outreach Program and my son Andre, he is the president, also graduated from Newport News School System Heritage, right? First, I want to say, um, I knew I was gonna see y'all here tonight, the Jones family, and on Sunday at Huntington, we will be honoring Deja there, all right? From 12 to 6. But just, we, we come here with solutions, okay? Our program, I've waited over nine years to come to the school board. I've seen some of y'all out there in meetings on the battlefield, like, uh, brother right here. Uh, we've been in this building a lot of time, getting kids back into school. We even worked in your school system voluntarily, right? Uh, we worked with bullying from gang violence in the streets of Newport News, Hampton, in the homes where there's bullying going on and in the school system. Over nine years, we waited to come here and you say, why? Because we want to show ourselves accountable and credible, uh, to the people first, and that's what we have done. Our program, we work with young people six days a week. Our facility's on Jefferson Avenue, 1904. Right after school, uh, they come there, we have anger management, tutoring, uh, social skills. We, we do it all. We take them to colleges, uh, we show them different cultures. We take them to colleges, we show them different cultures. And one of the things that we do is that we have a movement called It's War Time, and we're fighting on a different level, meaning with an unspeakable love. And it's working, it's been working. We've been used as vessels to literally change a lot of young people's lives, that we send off to college and, you know, the service, right? This weekend, I'm just gonna read this, and my son got something he want to say, he can say it, but for me, it's not what we do, it's who we are. Six days a week, anybody who knows us know that we're at the schools at the drop of a dime, we out there on the street, we even go to the homes when there's problems with them. Our youth and community will never know how much we love them until we show them how much we care. Let's make a stand against gang violence and bullying by loving and bringing our communities together. So come out to our second annual cookout, May twenty-second, two thousand sixteen, starting at twelve to six P.M. at Huntington Park. This year, for the families in the eastern, we will be providing free transportation for them. Anybody who is dealing with bullying, we are ready, we're on board. Use us, send us. We're here to work for y'all and also for the parents, all right? Anybody that know us, know that we are about our business and we keep our word. Our children are our future. We have to invest it. The truth of the matter is, we created this situation, not individually, but as a whole. So as a whole, teamwork, make the dream work, and we have to work to fix it. We have to be accountable. Everybody, to the teachers, the police, the parents, the programs out here that they say that they for the children, they got to step their game up and be for real. Stop taking the money from the city and not using it properly for our children. We've been going over nine years, and we haven't gotten a grant yet. We've been supported by the mothers and people in the community, and we're still standing. Why is that? God bless you.
Thank you.
Well, I think, I think we want to continue and let everybody speak. So Jacqueline, is it Coran? Corbin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jacqueline Corbin. I'm here to support Justice for Deja, and as a parent of a child who's been bullied since she was in sixth grade, it got worse when she got into Woodside High School. She was bullied by two or three or more people each day. I was up at the school so much, you would think that I was a student in the school, and it really got worse when she got in the tenth grade. The bullying started going from females to males to, well, one of them spread a rumor about her that she would do anything for beef jerky, that she had about three guys to come up to her and show their penis and whatnot. And I went to the staff and everything, and nothing has, and nothing was done when she was there. And to me, the staff should be held accountable, too. I said, it's wrong that, that somebody who cursed at the school could get a longer suspension than somebody who get bullied and whatnot. So I'm just here to support the family and let know that something needs to be done. Thank you.
So I am gonna finish, I'm gonna allow everybody to speak who put cards in. Any other cards that come in, including the last two, we're gonna, we're gonna hear those at the end of the meeting. So I have four more cards here, and next is, is it Patty LaGrace or LaCase? Are you here? Good evening. Thank you for coming.
Okay, I was here at the last meeting, and I want to say that, again, to the audience here now, my son was bullied six years ago. He's sixteen now, and he was bullied, reverse bullying is female on boy, and boy on boy. So that's reverse bullying is when the girls bully the boys. And I taught him not to fight, not to do anything, just walk away. He'd done it many a times. He'd go to the principal, sister principal and everything, and nothing happened. So one day on the school bus, he had enough, and he turned around and he beat up the little boy who bullied him. And then he got suspended for ten days and kicked out the bus for the rest of the school year. But guess what? Nothing happened to that boy who bullied him at all. So in the school handbook, you have some rules about kids being bullied, but it's not correct actually, because the bullies should be recommended quickly, then the kids are being bullied. They shouldn't be out of school, they should be in school, and the ones who does the crime should do the time. But that's what happened in this city. And I'm speaking out to all bullies. My son, he got himself together, and he's standing for himself now. But what about those other, like she said, Dr. Deja Jones and this school system? And another thing, I feel in my heart and my spirit that this is time now. Six years has gone past, my son's sixteen now, from the, my son beat up the boy until Deja killed herself, there's a big gap there that has progressed from that to now, and that's not good. So I want in my heart, in my mind, I want to see what the city's gonna do, and I think it should be a Deja Jones Law in her honor, because that's, enough is enough. So I will try to get together with some parents to see what I can do to, for the city to have a Deja Jones Law in the school handbook. So, because how it's written now, it's not, it's not physical to this day and time, it's way back then. You gotta get up to step with what's going on now. The kids are, words, they say words don't hurt, but words do hurt. Words kill. Do you understand what I'm saying? Words kill kids. Our kids now are going for tomorrow, and if they keep killing themselves now, we won't have kids that be adults tomorrow. And I pray to the Lord that my wonderful city would do something about all of that. God bless you all. Thank you.
Michelle, Michelle Westby.
Good evening.
Welcome.
My condolences to the family of Deja Jones. I'm here today, and I'm so glad that, I don't know where the meeting came from, but I'm standing here, and I'm glad for the meeting on tonight, because most of the people that bully people, they don't get suspended. There are kids on the bus every day. I'm sure y'all have seen videos. There's kids on the bus, I live downtown Newport News. I moved downtown, my daughter was in the fourth grade, she's in the ninth grade now. She used to ride the bus from thirty, Thirty-first Street, thirty-something Street, all the way to Palmer, forty-five minute bus ride. They kept on stopping the bus, and they probably still do it now. But I moved to the other side, so now my kids are scheduled to go to B.C. Charles, but I put them in a magnet program, thinking that, you know, this is a magnet program. But now they're going to Newsom Park, which is closer to my home, but the bullying, the bullying is ridiculous. And I've asked since my daughter was in the fourth grade, can a parent ride the bus? Can somebody get on the bus with these kids? They said, the only thing that they can do is for the little kids from K to second, they have a bus monitor. Now, I heard that something happened to where they had someone ride the bus with some of the kids on Newsom Park bus. But my son, he got suspended for ten days, too. And, you know, he was, he was actually, I don't know if it was mainly because of him fighting his brother, or him getting into it with another student. They have SOWs right now. My son is in the fifth grade, he's an honors student, but he just now went back to school, today is Tuesday, he just went back to school today. He was on a ten-day suspension. Now, I understand, and the reason why is because he was hitting his brother first, which is also a student. But the reason why he did that was because he was trying to prevent my younger son from going back there where the trouble is. He did not want to sit back there himself. He asked the bus driver, can he sit up front? And the bus driver told him to go to the back of the bus, okay? So this is going on before Deja died, before, there's kids, and if you look at the news, you seeing it all over. Something needs to be done about this bullying situation, because there will be more Dejas, there will be more whatever the other people's names in the other states that we don't know about are. You know what I'm saying? I really am asking that y'all will do something about this. Change your, your rules and regulations to where whoever instigate or starts the fight, actually, those people that start the fights, they're not the ones that's fighting. They have these other kids fighting. There's these people that start fights called instigators. They don't get suspended. The ones that are actually fighting, like, people don't do anything about that, and I think y'all should do something about that. I couldn't even see the video of what happened on the bus because of the other children trying to protect the other children. I'm like, I would like to see the video of what happened on the bus with my son. And I'm just asking that y'all do something about this, like, there'll be more kids, like, I mean, time goes on, it's been going on, and y'all just really need to do something about this.
Thank you. Daquan Jones. Is Daquan here? Okay, good. Welcome. Do you go to Gilder Sleep? That's what the card says. What grade are you in?
I'm in the seventh grade.
Good for you. Welcome.
All right. So my name is Daquan Jones from Gilder Sleep Middle School, and I'm here because I want bullying to stop. I have always been bullied just because of my height. I get hurt every day, and I have been to my teachers, principals, and counselors. But it gets even worse every day. Boys have followed me off the bus. They hit me, and they posted it on, posted it on social media. And when I get, and when I go to school, I get called all types of names by everyone, and I have lost friends at school. I want this to stop now, because every day, me and others like me feel like hurting ourselves. And it seems like the school doesn't care.
Daquan. Thank you for having the courage to come tonight and share your experience, and we are with you, and we, we're gonna, we're gonna try to help. Thank you for coming. Okay, the last card we're gonna hear in this section of our public comments is from Tamika Gatling, and the other cards we can hear at the end of the meeting. Tamika? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Tamika Gatling, as you said, I'm a school bus driver, and I just, I work and that's why I'm up for this meeting. I do sympathize with the family of Deja, because that was like very heartbreaking for me. I have two goddaughters that are in this system also, and for me, that hit so close to home, because I helped raise them, so they're like mine, so I do apologize for that. And there's nothing I can really say to, you know, take that feeling that y'all have, and I apologize on behalf of my staff, other school bus drivers, because we all felt the same, because we take these kids to school every day. We do try to be, like, the first smiling face that they see, it's kind of hard sometimes, and it's o'clock in the morning, it's the first round of schools, but we do try. And we do have a lot of difficulties on our buses in our schools as far as bullying. Me myself, I do try to take a very big role in advising my kids, we're not doing bullying on my bus, I don't know what happens outside or here, but this bus, we cannot do that, because we don't want what happened to Deja and others to happen again. We do have some concerns on our side as school bus drivers, though, that we have put in many referrals for bullies, for fights, for many things. Disrespect the older kids, a lot more of them cussing us out, nobody's dealing with the behaviors. I always believe in chain reactions. I don't know whether y'all ever learned anything about chain reactions and how it works. Everything's come, it's a consequence for everything that you do, and a lot of our kids are not facing those consequences, and it's causing things to happen like this. So what we really want is for, when we do put in these referrals, and we do put in the things that needs to be done, we need them to get done. You expect for us to have a job. I personally, by myself, I drive kids by myself, and my kids can range from maybe fifteen to up to seventy kids. My bus hold that many kids, so it's me against the world, basically, on my bus. That's my world. And I have all these kids on the bus, and it's hard to mandate the behaviors on it, because you cannot see every little thing. And then some kids, they don't say anything, they wait till it's too late to say anything, and then we can't do anything about it, and then their parents are like, the bus driver or the teacher, nobody did anything. We need for you to really start telling your kids in the beginning to start opening their mouth, to say something, to address us, regardless of the fact, even if you have to address me the next morning or the next day immediately, address the situation with your bus driver, address it with your teacher. If nothing's getting done, that's why I need all parents to really step more into it and say, look, I need for you to do more. So as on behalf, when I'm asking, that we need for our schools to do more on referrals when we put them in, do not keep telling us that, oh, well, the policy say, the policy states a lot of things that needs to get done, and those are one of them, to have actions for the kids when they do something wrong.
I want to, I want to just say this, that when Deja's passing occurred, I think it's, it stopped all of us in Newport News public schools, and really made us think about each and every one of our students. I have a student in our schools, I think we have five school board members who have children or have had children graduate from Newport News schools. We have teachers here. This message tonight that you've brought us, you know, speaks directly to our hearts. We understand that, we get it. And we are committed to not only making our schools a safe place, but making them a place where our students can thrive. We will continue to look at everything we're doing, and we'll continue to look at all the best examples. I know when I got on the school board my first year, you know, I had a rising sixth grader, and the first thing I signed up for at the National School Board Conference was a session, an all-day session on bullying, cyberbullying, and what's known as sexting. And it opened my eyes. Anybody who's got a child has had their eyes opened. We'll work through this together. I want to continue to ask you to, you know, bring your concerns to us, and ask you also to have the faith that we, as your school board, will be walking this walk with you and trying to make it work better for our children. We really believe that we've, we've got a lot of great emphasis on youth development. We believe that the, that school can and should be the safest place for our kids. It's where they can spend the best part of their day, and we're gonna continue to be diligent and work with you to make that happen. And so thank you for bringing such heartfelt, real comments to our meeting tonight. For those who didn't get a chance to speak, we'll give you an opportunity as soon as we finish up the rest of our agenda, and I want to thank you for coming tonight. I think we're probably gonna recess for five minutes until, so we can let everybody who's spoken leave, and then we'll resume the meeting. Thank you. Okay. Welcome back to the May seventeenth, two thousand sixteen regular meeting of the school board for Newport News. We're gonna move on with our regular agenda, and then any comment cards that I still have, we'll hear those once we're finished and get our business out of the way. The next item is the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the April nineteenth, two thousand sixteen meeting, financial reports, a revenue report, expense report, child nutrition report, and a personnel report. Do I have a motion to approve? Okay, moved and seconded. Who was the second?
Addie.
Mr. Hicks. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hunter.
Four.
Mr. Scott.
Four.
Ms. Simons.
Four.
Four.
Mr. Starchill.
Four.
Mr. Ashby.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
And Mr. Hicks.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, next, we're gonna move on to Action Items. That's, uh, under Section 4, and the first item is Personnel Actions.
I do have one tonight.
Do you wanna move?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, I have one recommendation to the board tonight, and, um, that is to, uh, ask you to appoint Tammy Byron, if you'd stand, as our new instructional supervisor for STEM, Science Engineering, uh, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. Um, let me tell you a little bit about Tammy. She, um, has been a part of Newport News Public Schools since 2005 as an elementary teacher. She has also served as our educator in residence, uh, from the National Institute of Aerospace, and represented Newport News there. And she has been, uh, for the past two years, our STEM instructional specialist. And she's done a great deal of work in jump-starting our whole work with STEM and our engineering design challenges. She has, um, a graduate certificate in STEM education from McDaniel College, and, uh, working on her advanced degree in STEM Curriculum and Instruction from Virginia Tech. So, I'm very excited tonight to recommend Tammy Byron as our instructional supervisor for STEM.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Alright, do I have a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded by Mr. Ashby. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hunter.
Four.
Mr. Scott.
Four.
Ms. Simons.
Four.
Mr. Starchill.
Four.
Mr. Ashby.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
And Mr. Hicks.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Welcome to the new assignment. Thank you, Ms. Byron. Thank you for your leadership. We look forward to working with you in this new capacity. Alright, next, we have, um, the need to adopt the Special Education Federal Funding Plan. Are there any questions? I think this item was in the packet, and we heard a report on it previously. Do I have a motion?
Still move.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Mr. Brown. Any questions, comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hunter.
Four.
Mr. Scott.
Four.
Ms. Simons.
Four.
Mr. Starchill.
Four.
Mr. Ashby.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
And Mr. Hicks.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Alright, next item, we need to adopt high school English textbooks. Uh, we heard a report on this last month, and the books have been out in the hallway and on display, available. Uh, do I have a motion to adopt?
Adoption.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Mr. Hunter. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hunter.
Four.
Mr. Scott.
Question.
Mr. Scott?
Yes. The books, they'll be for upcoming school year.
Correct.
Fine. Uh, four.
Ms. Simons.
Four.
Mr. Starchill.
Four.
Mr. Ashby.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
Mr. Hicks.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. Last, last item under Action, we have a need to revise our budget, which we passed several months ago, uh, just due to a technicality. Uh, the, uh, city had, uh, offered an additional million dollars, uh, in capital, and, uh, after a series of, you know, working meetings, it became clear that the, um, money that had been earmarked in their budget, uh, in our operating budget, was really conditioned on a fiber optic, uh, agreement where the city would purchase some additional fiber optic, uh, capacity on our system. And it, um, it's become clear that's not appropriate in our operating budget, so that, uh, we will resolve that, um, we will resolve that fiber optic, uh, arrangement through the normal business dealings between the city and the school division. But we have to take that million dollars that's available for it out of the operating budget. It'll simply be, uh, something that is worked out later over the year, we anticipate. And so, what we need to do tonight is the school board is make sure that we, uh, reduce our budget by that million dollars. Uh, so, any questions?
Uh, with this reduction, one, uh, money will be available for capital needs within our, our budget. How much money?
The city did follow through on a commitment for a million dollars of additional capital money that they'll make available through the capital plan, uh, which I believe starts as of July 1st. So, we have that commitment. So, we got a million dollars in capital, and, uh, at this point, we, we can't, we can't keep the million dollar figure in the operating budget that was talked about. So, we need to just, this is kind of a bookkeeping, uh, technical change that we need to make.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the school would adjust the fiscal year 2017 operating budget to reflect the reduced funding as appropriated by the City Council in the amount of $304,598.
Okay, moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hunter.
Four.
Mr. Scott.
Four.
Ms. Simons.
Four.
Mr. Starchill.
Four.
Mr. Ashby.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
And Mr. Hicks.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Alright, we're gonna move on to Reports and Information. Tonight, we have Item 5.01, a report for the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook Revisions that have been under, under consideration and development this year. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Chairman Starchill, Vice Chairman Hunter, members of the board, and Dr. Kilgore. Ms. Tilly and I are here this evening to share with you the proposed revisions to the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. As you know, we make this report annually, but I must begin by saying that more and more each year, our revisions bring this handbook in line with our division priorities and youth development philosophies. As with all our work, tonight's presentation is firmly based in our academic agenda, primarily in the areas of youth development and developing citizen-ready students. Our youth development model is multifaceted with our rights and responsibilities as one of many, many resources and supports provided to all students in the division. The Rights and Responsibilities Handbook is not merely a list of rules and consequences, but actually an informative resource that provides our school community with guidance on our expectations, procedures, and supports. Next, Ms. Tilly will explain our process for gathering feedback from various stakeholders, groups, in detail for you, the proposed revisions.
Thank you. Um, each year, we gather recommendations for revision from many groups. Um, we begin with any directives that we receive from the General Assembly or the VDOE, the Department of Education, that may impact our handbook. But next, we seek, um, input from the folks that we work with every day, including students, administrators, security officers, our families. Um, I'm delighted that we were able to involve more students in the process this year than ever. We actually held focus groups at each of our high schools, and so over 50 of our high school students were able to be involved in the process this year. Um, and then finally, we share these recommendations with senior staff before bringing them to you this evening. Our first recommendation is to our current cell phone policy, and as you can imagine, this is something our students felt quite strongly about, and they have very strong opinions about their telephones. Um, of course, as always, we continue to promote our Bring Your Own Device, or BYOD program with our students and teachers. However, there are certain times, unfortunately, when a cell phone or another, a device, might be used inappropriately at school. And we have a series of consequences that we follow in those cases, but currently, we're reken, recommending to remove the third consequence. Uh, we were confiscating the phone and not returning it for five days. Uh, we no longer believe this is the best course of action, and we recommend that it be removed entirely. Uh, what, the way that would leave, the offense, the consequences you see here, students would have the phone returned at the end of the day, or to their parents, as soon as we get with the parents. So, we don't intend to keep phones for five days any longer, and as you can imagine, this was wildly popular with our, with our students. Our second recommended revision is to our definition of fighting. We propose that we amend our definition to allow administrators more flexibility in differentiating the consequences for students when the investigation reveals that, um, one student was only acting in self-defense. Um, we propose removing the language that you see here, regardless of which participant is the aggressor, and we would prefer to add that exceptions may result when the evidence shows that the student was acting in self-defense and did not provoke this fight. Uh, we heard loud and clear from the students and from our staff that it was, um, difficult to provide the same consequences to both students when perhaps they both weren't engaged in the same way. Now, those are our two recommendations for this year that we received from our folks, but we'd like to conclude, um, by updating you on some of the results of revisions that you approved in past years. Um, often, these minor changes make a big difference. You may remember that last year, am I not moving? Here we go, there we go. Last year, when we came to you, we asked you to, to amend our middle school fighting policy to allow for a more developmentally appropriate consequence for our middle school students. Um, previously, the first fight, you got a 10-day suspension, and if you fought a second time, you were recommended for long-term suspension. Last year, you all approved the change, that the first fight would be a five-day suspension, second one-ten, and the third, long-term. Well, I am delighted to tell you that, as by the end of, um, March, over 1,200 days of suspension had been stayed, um, saved because students were only staying home five days, not for the full 10. And, um, I, you know, years ago, they would've been at home, and this year, they were in class. But the more good news from this is that the recidivism rate is less than 10%. The students are not fighting the second time. So, we feel that that data shows that that five-day consequence was enough of a deterrent and helped make the point that we, we don't fight in middle school. They are not fighting the second time. So, we feel this was a, a huge improvement in the, in the, uh, work that we did last year. Also, last year, you may remember, we came to you with a, a good behavior policy idea, and it was even especially exciting because it originated with our student leaders. Um, this policy is, will offer students the opportunity to advocate for themselves and make positive decisions for their future. We don't want a discipline infraction, um, early on in a high school career to necessarily have to remain on a student's record, provided certain criteria have, have been met. Well, we are delighted that this policy has been piloted all year long at Enterprise Academy, and over 23 students have been able to return to their home school, um, earlier than they were expected to do so by meeting the program's expectations. Meanwhile, this year, we had a committee formed, and they've worked hard to establish procedures and forms and things that can be used at all of our high schools. And so, our current, uh, freshmen, sophomores, juniors, all of our students, except our seniors that are leaving us, uh, will benefit from this as it begins next semester. So, we're delighted to go citywide with that next year. And one more note, um, our use of in-school suspension has continued to involve, we have, um, tried to promote the idea that ISS could be used for certain class periods where the student is having a discipline infraction, as opposed to losing an entire day of instruction for a problem that you're only having in one class. So, when appropriate, we've encouraged our administrators to do that. As you can see here, almost 50% of the time across the city, um, 62% in high school and 46% of the time in middle school, we're using it for a period instead of for the full day. That has saved, as you can see, thousands and thousands of instructional hours for students. So, um, we, we're very proud of that change as well. Things continue to evolve. Well, there we go.
Our Rights and Responsibilities Handbook is really only a small part of our overall youth development effort, and our division benchmarks continue to serve as a guide for us. But as we heard here tonight, we know that there's lots of work to do, and we're really extremely committed to making sure that we're working hard to create environments in where our kids are likely to behave and likely to thrive, and we're committed to doing that. Our next steps include seeking your approval of these revisions at your June 21st meeting, subsequently revising and publishing the new handbook for distribution next fall, and planning professional development for all of our administrators in August. At this time, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you for that report. Comments? Oh.
I just had a question about the BYOD. Um, what does it take for a student to get that taken away if they're under the BYOD? Like, because you get the cell phone taken away if you're using it, how would you get it taken away if you're under that?
You wouldn't. As long as it's, um, your BYOD approved and your teacher is allowing for a BYOD activity in class, your phone should never be taken away. This is only in cases where it's being used in a purpose.
Oh, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Morgan. Other questions?
I'm off with a student.
No silence?
Um, I, I just wanna thank you all for really making an effort to get feedback from the students. I think it's very important, and since I've been on the school board, I have noticed that you all are willing to make changes, and it does take some time to get the feedback and to get the input from, um, our stakeholders, who are the students and the parents, but I think the system really does work, and I think these changes are an example of that. Um, I know I've had many parents call me frustrated about the, the fighting rule, so I'm really happy that you guys are making this change to, to the rule, and, um, I appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, um, congratulations. This is very effective in terms of the progress we've seen over the last, uh, two years, um, to see the hours saved, uh, for instruction because of the in-school suspension, and I know that it was, uh, we looked at, it was a hardship for certain kids to have to go home and be without food for a period of time. So, this has been of great benefit to the community. I think because we've had renewed interest, um, this evening, I'd like to ask the question, in terms of being a family that's consulted, uh, as part of the committee that's developing this, how would a family get involved, uh, to be, uh, one of the consulting families?
Yes, well, um, it's, we do it different ways, different years. Um, oft, sometimes we have a public forum, sometimes we go through our PTA council, and we can do it that way. Quite honestly, often, the calls just come into our office with concerns and things about policies, and we take it family by family and situation by situation. We keep a running record the entire year of all the concerns about the policies and about the rules and regulations that we have. So, we have ongoing feedback at all times. So, we, we will take it in any way we get it. Obviously, we got a lot of feedback this evening, and, and, um, we collect all that. We've already started focus groups with students at schools, started at Woodside, obviously, um, having focus groups just about bullying with kids, to ask them, "What is your experience? What are you seeing? What are you hearing? What do you think needs to be done? What would be effective?" So, this will continue to evolve, even though we've brought this presentation this evening.
And so, all of the comments that were made this evening by families are going to be incorporated into next year's revision to the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, so that work is already being done right now.
It is, and, and to be clear, this is a living document. Um, it lives online. We print the books only once a year, but we change, we, we make sure, I mean, we don't change any policies, obviously, without coming before the board, but if there are things we can work with administrators, like the intermittent ISS, for example, we didn't change any policies or procedures, we're just using it in a different way. So, we have lots of things we can do before the printing of the next book, and, and we took notes on every single comment tonight. Yes, sir.
And last question is about the participation rate, the, uh, in clubs, activities, and sports. We have it up to 79%, which is outstanding. Of course, um, we want to get it up to 100%. So, for the 21% of students, can we see a report in aggregate of who those students are? Um, what are some of the experiences they have, and what's driving them, us to not be able to get that 20, last 21%?
Yes, and if I can brag on, uh, Ms. Adams won't do it, I'll brag on herself, but every single month, she pulls that data and shares it with the school, and actually sends the list of names to each, um, school leadership team about who's not connected to a club sport or activity. So, every single month throughout the year, we, this is last year's number, so you'll, you'll see a different number this year. They've worked every single month to make this, we've had middle-of-the-year club fairs, just trying to still get kids connected and to find something they want to do. So, we have that information.
Great, thank you. Okay. Let's see. Oh, Mr. Ashby?
Yeah, I probably agree with you. You want to try the same reference to that? Because ultimately, you know, getting them connected, get them involved, the concept of relationships, expectations, all those type of things. And, um, one of the things that's so important is the academic component of it, but there's sometimes the non-academic component go, goes ahead and, and supplements or holds the bridge to the academic component. I think that is vital for the success of it. Lastly, what I would also like to say and share is when a student has a challenging situation as far as behavior is concerned, that the child takes responsibility, has, is accountable to himself, and, and situation in school, to grow and develop. That is the inward or the intrinsic or internal motivation, which is so significant and so, so very, very important. So, the people around me help me to grow and develop, but inwardly and intrinsically, I grow and I develop, and I develop a self-fulfilling prophecy as far as success is concerned also. And that's, that develops and connects with developing the whole child.
So, I wanna, uh, Mr. Scott?
Yes. Um, I love to see that you guys have made some amendments, some changes with the changing I love to see that you guys have made some amendments, some changes with the changing times. I can remember a couple of years ago, me and Mr. Leah Mead back there hashing it out. She spoke as a student, I spoke as a parent. Some of the amendments that you guys have right now were some of the issues that we brought up at that time. Of course, everything doesn't happen right away. We couldn't make those changes. But as you can see right now, we're, go ahead and make those changes to try to make something better. We'll see what happens. Like you said, you'll take the results, the stats, and we'll see where we go from there. But I'm glad to see that we are attempting to make a change for the better. Also, like, with the good behavior, I've had parents and families who've already kind of like started in that process. So some of these things are working. I know there are a lot of issues that we cannot take, take out of our school system. We can't, we can't take out of lives. But at the same time, everyone needs to know or believe that our school system is trying to do the best thing for our students. Everything just can't happen overnight. It takes the decision of the board, we're not one, you know, we don't have one voice, it's a voice of many. So at that, at that time, it's like, I need people to be considerate of everyone, not just thinking of the situation that may have happened or a situation that will happen. But at the same time, just, just really think of everybody who's involved. You can't point the finger, we don't want to be bullied here as school board members, just the same way we don't want our kids to be bullied. The crazy part about it, like, the verbiage, the verbiage is such a big deal, and that's what I remember the most from sitting on this panel or being in that room, trying to change the verbiage to be, I guess, I guess, better for the students. That's basically how to put it, just to be better for the students. And I'm glad to see, it looks to me right now that we're doing the right thing by changing the suspensions. And I know I've talked to Dr. Kilgore, this has been one of my pet peeves for a long time, just to keep our kids in the schools. And if we don't get it right in the next couple of years, we'll make more changes. That's the only thing. I'm pretty sure that will happen, and I hope you guys continue to do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Tully, leadership in our secondary, you know, division, and Bridget Adams, leadership in our youth development arena. This is a very important team, and we look forward to you leading us through, you know, getting everything to, everything that we possibly can in place to support our children. So thank you. Thank you for your report tonight. And thank you for your comments. All right. Next is a report on our capital improvements plan for the school division for fiscal year 2018 through 2022. And I'll only say this, that every year, we start trying to put into focus what the next five years needs to look like. And so we're starting that picture tonight for what the next five years ought to look like in terms of maintaining and bringing the facilities on that we know we need to do. Mr. Webb?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Kilgore. As the chair so aptly explained, this is an annual event for me to try and explain what the capital needs are for the school division covering a five-year term. Our needs are probably stretched well beyond five years, but the process requires us to lay it out in five-year bites. So as you can see, this five-year plan has a total value of $142,788,781. It's a really big number. It's a bigger number than you have seen in the past, and hopefully, as we walk through the plan, it'll become evident why it's a bigger number. So something I like to do every year is remind you that buildings age, just as all of us do. The average, we have 42 buildings that are schools. We actually maintain somewhere in the vicinity of 70 buildings, 42 of which are school buildings. We have some that are in the portfolio that we lease, those are not included in this statistic. We have 3.9 million square feet, and that doesn't include almost 100,000 square feet that are contained in learning cottages. The average age is 49 years, that's up one year from last year. Five built in 19, before 1950, eight built in the 50s, and 14 in the 60s. If there was some sort of catastrophe to befall the city and wiped out all the schools, it would take $861,702,000 to replace every building. That statistic is updated annually using Department of Education construction costs. So life cycle is, speaks to the concept that how long will a building last once you build it? The industry accepted average is it's 50 years without a significant renovation of some sort. Within the building, there are various components that have shorter lifespans. You see here, roofs 25, heating 20, cooling 15. So in any given 50-year cycle, we're going to have to replace some parts of the building more than once. The current project total includes 48% for Huntington Middle School replacement, and 34% replaces roofs and HVAC systems. So here's the nuts and bolts for the next five years. You can see it's a fairly lengthy list. It's got some new items on it that you may not have seen in previous iterations of this report. But you can see, over the five-year period, we're going to spend $34.7 million on HVAC projects. That's going to address 17 schools. Roof replacements, 16.4, that's going to touch 14 schools. Electrical replacements, that's parts and pieces, it's nothing widespread, we're not replacing entire electrical systems. Civil maintenance, that's a new category. It's a result of facility condition assessment that we are engaged in currently, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that as we go through the thing. But that mostly addresses things like sidewalks, parking lot pavement, stormwater drainage ADA upgrades. Two years ago, there was a new iteration of the ADA law. The ADA law is a civil rights law, it is not a building code. We are required to be in compliance with it. So this is the first bite out of a very big apple that we're going to have to be approaching systematically in order to be in compliance with the law. The numbers you see there represent touching four of the early childhood centers and three elementary schools. That's it. This is predominantly addressing toilets that are out of compliance, as well as access to the stage areas within those schools. Learning cottages, they're meant to be temporary, but the fact is, they live a little longer on our premises than we'd like. So these are replacing existing learning cottages. Our oldest one is a 1960s vintage trailer, so it's probably time to replace it. Next item is classroom cabinetry. This addresses the elementary schools only. The cabinets, by and large, that are in every single one of our buildings are the ones that were put in there the day they were built. Nobody has a kitchen cabinet in their house, it's probably approaching the ages that we have. Buses are also resident within the capital plan. You can see, we've got a funding stream established to try and meet our replacement need. The biggest change is now the new construction for Huntington. It's something we've been trying to work into the budget for a number of years. We thought it would be an appropriate time to get it out in front of the folks who are charged with providing funding. So 2.8 million is for the design, that's about a two-year process to design a middle school. And we've gotten several estimates, and 60 million seems to be the range it's going to cost us for a new middle school. For a grand total of $143 million. So if you're visually inclined, don't like the number so much, here's a pie graph, kind of lays it out. So I talked about a facility condition assessment. So we need about 17.2 to $34 million annually, just to kind of keep up with what's deteriorating around us. We're not funding it at that level. If we don't get some significant increase in our capital funding, our maintenance costs are going to increase, our buildings are not going to get in any better condition. So that's the background for asking for a facilities condition assessment to be done. We hired mosley architects to conduct inspection of 51 of our buildings, and the things they covered are delineated there, mostly your major building systems, the architectural aspects, the outside, the civil aspects. They're also looking at child nutrition equipment in the kitchens. While that's not included in the capital budget, it is what they looked at as part of the whole picture. Educational adequacy, that speaks to how well does the building address the ability to teach. We no longer teach today like we taught in the 30s, 40s, and 50s. We're teaching differently. Our buildings should reflect that. They're going to provide us a blueprint for trying to get this item funded, all the items on the list funded. So the next step before you all is to hopefully approve this budget at your next meeting in June 21st. We hope to have the facilities condition assessment completed by fall in totality. And then, I understand it's been your hope to have a joint meeting with city council somewhere along the way. So stand ready for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Questions? Brown?
The 96,000 square feet for learning cottages, from a school perspective, from average size of a school building, how many school buildings roughly is that? If you say it was average elementary school?
That's 135 classrooms, so that's smaller than a high school. It's about two, about six elementary schools, so that'll give you kind of a range.
So six, the equivalent of about six elementary schools are trailers that we have?
Yeah, five to six, depending on the size of the elementary school.
And in terms of this, in terms of the schools that are built, the five built prior to 1950, I guess what I'd like to see when we get ready to vote on this in June, is I don't see any reason why we wouldn't include those in our budget. So the five schools that are nearly 70 years old, no reason to wait any longer on trying to replace those buildings, given that the average useful life of a building is supposed to be 50 years, so those are well past their useful lives. So I understand that it's a request, but no reason not to make the request to replace the buildings that are oldest in our division.
And Huntington Falls is inside that timeframe that you're talking about.
Other comments? Questions? Mr. Ashby?
I just wanted to stress, I just want to say thank you for stressing that you cannot teach the way in which you taught years ago in buildings that were built years ago. I mean, that's really very, very important for the public to understand, because of the usage of technology, the physicality of the building, instructional practices, all those things conglomerate together, that it has to be teaching in the 21st century modality, not just instruction, the best practices, but the physical building also has to be up to the 21st century. So thank you for bringing out that point, stressing that point to us.
Questions? Comments? I'd like to thank Mr. Webb for this. I'd also like to offer some comments. My profession is designing buildings. Now, we don't design schools. So, you know, it's, it's important, though, to realize that when Newport News developed and combined with Warwick County in 1958, that a population boom ensued, and the city grew very rapidly. And that's when a lot of schools were built. That's when the schools that I went through were built, a lot of them. The need is ever-present for us as a school board, and I think the need is there for the city, for every community, to really try to figure out, what do they, what do they need for schools? What do they need for education? We look and we see our communities that are our next-door neighbors figuring this out. We see Norfolk is working on a multi-school construction program. We see York County, you know, expanding their schools. We have seen Hampton bring on new schools. And I would say that they don't build them like they used to, but in some cases, you know, the way they used to build them is pretty durable. So if you took Booker T. Middle School as an example, you know, there's a building that's very old, but it's also very new, and it had a very visionary new program and addition. And now it's one of the most loved school buildings, you know, in our whole fleet. We don't want to paint the picture that we've got a bunch of totally obsolete facilities. We have put new roofs on many of them, you know, many times, and we put new windows, new HVAC systems. So when we look at Huntington, you know, Huntington is a school that if you drive, if you drive by and you really start looking at it, you have to ask yourself, is that the best facility for our middle school students in the southeast community? And I think it's really hard to come up with, yes, it is, and it is the best that we can offer. The difference between this year's $140 million budget for capital and last year's is $60 million. The difference is, we put, we put the Huntington project back in the plan. And every time we put the Huntington project in the plan, it gets worked out of the plan. And so the responsibility of our school board is to call it the way we see it. And that facility in particular is one that is on our radar as needing to be replaced. It's an old high school. It's not designed, it's not sized, it's not, it's not capable of functioning the way a middle school needs to function today. That's why it's in our plan. That's why it's been in the plan for six years. So I think the difference between last year's capital budget at 80 million for five years and this year's at 142, it's, we're fessing up and saying Huntington needs to be in the plan. It is a big number, but it's a big school division, and we have a lot of children, and we need, we need to be in the 21st century for what they need. So I, that's my pitch for the plan, and now the debate can start.
I want to congratulate you for your report, but when you read in the paper, the neighboring school divisions are building five schools at one time? Some planning has been done between the city and the school board. I don't care what you call it, it's, you know, they're building five schools. And we talking about a school that's older than I am? And we're going to teach kids 21st century skills? We wasting money? It costs us four times as much money to heat the building and to cool the building. So give me a break. We just, we just can't, you know, tell it like it is. It's true. If we can find money to do anything else, if we can find money to build a better school and take it off the, send us back, and we can't do anything for 2017? And we already had it on the plan. I can fussy, because we're very good.
That sounds like a yes vote, Mr. Hicks.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Any other comments?
I just want to thank you. You guys do a great job.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. We're down to item 5.03, the attendance report, 504, the membership report, 505, the construction report. All of those were included in the packets, were on board docs. Any questions? If there aren't, I'm going to move on to comments by the superintendent.
Sure. First, I want to thank our Sage group. Morgan is the leader of our Student Advisory Group on Education that I get to meet with every month. And as they started their school year, they decided they want to make an impact on the message that the community heard about their high schools. So we did, they sponsored a big expo at Patrick Henry Mall on April the 23rd, and it was really well planned, and it was very well executed, and the community was very interested in talking to the young people about all of your programs. So we also had musical performances, and Morgan was the emcee for that. She just did it all that day, and it really was, a really nice, a nice day at the mall. And so I really thank the young people. I think you started a tradition that will continue in Newport, in Newport New School. So I want to invite you to a really neat event on June the 4th. It's a Saturday. It's over at Christopher Newport. Newport News Public Schools sponsors a STEM Community Day. We have buses that come from all over the community to bring families and young people to the Christopher Newport Gymnasium. And we've got hands-on activities with robotics, STEM demonstration competitions, and then there's also, young people can come there and also learn about STEM, or they could go for STEM education and what professions are available in STEM. We also have a Health and Wellness Fair that day at the gymnasium. It's just a lot of fun. So put that on your calendar, June the 4th, at CNU Freeman Center from 10 until 4:00. And the last thing I want to do is wish all of our graduating seniors the best and to end school well and to have, to build yourself a great ideal for your future. We will not meet, our board will not meet for me to get to offer our congratulations until after graduation is over. So let me just review when we have our graduations. On Thursday evening, June the 9th, at 6:00, Achievable Dream holds its graduation commencement at the Ferguson Center. And then we move to the Hampton Coliseum. On Saturday, the 11th, Heritage High School starts us off at 10:00 a.m. with Morgan as the valedictorian there. We have, at 2:00 that same day, at, this is Saturday, June 11th, we have men's commencement at 2:00, and then Warwick ends our day at the Coliseum at 6:30 with their graduation. Then we come back on Sunday to the Coliseum. We've got Woodside High School at 2:00 p.m. and followed by Denby at 6:00. All of that at the and followed by Denby at 6:00. All of that at the Coliseum. So again, congratulations, seniors. Thank you, families and teachers, for getting our kids this far and for setting them up for a great future. So it's been a good year, and I thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Kilbar. All right, we're gonna go into our second opportunity for public comments, and I have cards here, some of which were left over from our previous session. So I'd like to call on Bianca Cherry, if she's here. Good evening, and welcome to our meeting.
I have attended Newport News schools all my life, and I just recently finished my undergraduate career at Longwood University. I thought it would only be right to give my feedback and proposals and ideas on what we could do to kind of decrease on the bullying. Forgive me if this is already being implemented, peer mediation, adding sensitivity, bullying, or social justice and action and leadership summit programs or courses. Also, counselors requesting parents to seek out their kids' attention if there's a lack of extracurricular activities or dropping grades, and also to stress to the students, the resources that you do provide. I know when I was in school and I was provided the handbook for the rights and responsibilities, I just threw it away. So I think it's very important for teachers and the faculty and staff to provide those resources and add elaboration and, I guess, feedback on what they can do with those resources. Also, having a forum or summit similar to this to provide it for the students so that they know how much of a big deal bullying is. With college students, we do this a lot with summits and forums, so this is normal to me. But it's also good to provide that leadership experience with the students so that they know what resources they have and also how big of an impact bullying is so that it can at least decrease. We're not gonna cease bullying at all as far as like cyberbullying and what kids are doing these days, but it can make some type of improvement as far as these proposals and ideas being implemented. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Annalisa Lambert, did I say that correctly?
Yeah.
Good evening.
Um, I didn't have anything prepared really to say to you guys, but I just wanted to mention a few things, mainly with bullying. I'm a parent. I was a student at Woodside and Hines and Richneck. But I just, I'm very realistic. I know that you guys make the end decisions, and it's a lot of things that need to be done with time. But I feel like if somehow we can get more of the staff members or especially the teachers, because they're the main ones with the students. You guys don't really see the students every day or see what they're going through. If they could have more meetings or just to be on the same page on how to help the students more and not just leave it up to certain groups of people or even with the parents, because I know sometimes you get angry parents, you get concerned parents, or some parents that don't even really care. I know it's not just bullying at school. There's different aspects that kids go through, especially teenagers, and it's hard for them to deal with. They don't know their emotions yet. But with me losing my niece, it's, it's affecting so many other kids, too, and it's unfortunate. And I feel if the teachers themselves were more involved, from what I've heard from students, they feel like the teachers kind of turn a blind eye to things. And it's been several students. And if fights break out, some teachers, just the type of person that they are, they might not want to be in the middle of it, and then it just continues. Or I've learned that kids are smart. They come up with plans on how to get away with things or come up with groups of people to bully without getting kicked out, and then the next person will start to bully, and it's like a big cycle. And I know that as adults, somebody has to see it. And my son, he was also bullied several different times, and Mr. Scott actually helped me with that a couple of years back when he was in elementary school at Richneck. And a perfect example of that was, he was getting bullied in the bathroom. He was in fourth grade or third grade, and those fifth graders. They choked him up in the bathroom. My son happened to have a watch that records stuff, and he recorded the whole thing. But the principal had said they needed it for investigation. We watched the video, we showed them, they kept it, we got it back, it was deleted. And they said that they couldn't do anything about the kids that did anything because they didn't see anything. So, but my son ended up getting suspended. But thanks to Mr. Scott and whoever else helped him, it got erased. But it's, it's just, if everyone could be on the same page, that's what I'm saying. He helped. I don't know who else could have helped or who didn't help, like versus the principal, but if you could have more group meetings, not just like this, if you could set up for teachers to get together and be more strict with them, just like we have a rights and responsibilities handbook for students to follow, and it's very strict, like they have their consequences, I feel like the teachers should have it, too. Even though this is all one big organization, as Newport News Public Schools and teachers, just like hospitals and everything, doctors and nurses are all together, I just think you guys are in it for the kids. The kids are your people. And if the kids keep getting hurt and they don't feel comfortable enough, because you know kids, they're not gonna feel comfortable going to adults anyways. But if they really feel like they're being ignored, then they're gonna take it into their own hands, or they're going to go downhill. And I just feel like, the biggest point I'm trying to make is find a way with the teachers to understand more or to have group, monthly meetings about, okay, what's our progress here? And I don't know if you have that now, but from what I'm seeing, it hasn't helped them. And I'm not just saying Woodside, I'm not just saying Newport News, it's a lot of schools. So if y'all could just look into that.
We will. Thank you for your observations and coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Jessica Khalil, is Jessica here? Good evening.
My daughter does go to Woodside High School. My daughter's been to Crittenden. My daughter's been bullied since seventh grade. My daughter is 90 pounds and 4'9", 4'10". I am a widow. I have been taking care of my daughter since she was three by myself. I do have some little help from the family, but we, her and I live together by ourselves. And it was in middle school, eighth grade, when she was lashing out and being disrespectful and me trying to figure out what was wrong, thinking it was just a change in her hormones. Well, that's what we all think, and it's not change in hormones. It's also, too, not just kids that are bullying these kids, it's teachers. I do not have anything against the teachers that she has had in the past, but there's been times to talk to a teacher, was told, oh, she just needs to suck it up, she's only got a couple months left. And I thought to myself, she's your A1 student, and you're gonna tell me she needs to suck it up? This kid was cutting herself. And because of that, I had to take her to counseling. I have spent the last three years in counseling with her and finally got her to where she could enjoy herself and had the best 11th grade year she has had in school since kindergarten. And to be honest with you, I didn't have to check up on her, I didn't have to ask her about her homework or nothing. And she has been a A1 student. She loved to go to school, she loved to ride the bus. She was riding the bus from Fort Eustis Boulevard to Crittenden every day. Until now, I have to take her to school. I've nearly lost my job over the last four years because I'm worried about her getting in cars with kids that I don't know, when I won't even let her get in cars with parents that I don't know. Last year, she had the best year of her life. And this year, she got punched in the face the week before graduation cap and gown pictures, drum major pictures, exams, and got expelled, excuse me, suspended for 10 days for defending herself. Now, she did not want me to fight the suspension, which they told me I could do, because she don't want to go back to school. She's about to graduate. This kid is very talented. She don't want to go to college. She just entered in two art programs over this past weekend. She had one photography picture that she took on a trip of one of her friends that got picked out of 50 entries. She was one of 10. She did not win an award, but she won a place in that art program. So she went to Saturday, an art showing, and Sunday, an art showing. I mean, these kids want to do things, they want to succeed, but it's not just the kids that are hurting the kids, it's the teachers that are not giving them like they say. I commend these kids that came up here and told them. It takes a lot for them to say, I've been bullied, because they're afraid that not only do they tell somebody about it, the kids that are doing it, because the girl that punched her in the face had never said a word to her, ever. The girl that came up to her complaining about her wanting to know what was her problem, asked her what her problem was. My daughter's like, she didn't even know them. Asked, said she didn't know, we don't, I don't know what the problem's been. They've been harassing her for four months.
Ms. Khalil, can you bring it, bring it to a conclusion?
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, the teachers, too, go through a lot with these kids. They also, like they were saying, I do the suspension. I don't understand why she got suspended for defending herself, the same amount of time the kids that hurt her got suspended. So for 10 days, that was wrong. But she's not gonna want to go back to school. I would've had to get a medical release to keep her out that, that week or two. But with the changing of the suspension and with the teachers having more help to understand and how to deal with the kids when they're having these problems, is also, too, a big, big, I notice, importance, because they really don't know what to do when these kids are acting like this. And they think, oh, just ignore it and move on. But that may help them.
Let us, let us get back with you on that. And thank you for bringing it forward to us. And thank you for your comments tonight. Latoya, is that Latoya Breckenridge? Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. My condolences to the Jones family. I can only imagine what they have endured and what you all are faced with in this climate that we're in. And I hear you, and I believe that the people that have spoken are being heard. So my question this evening is, first, how long is it gonna take to hear some definitive action that is taking place as a result of the tragedies that you're hearing? Because clearly, although the Deja situation is awful, is like, you know, at a 10, there are so many children that are suffering every single day, and it doesn't seem like there is quick action taking place. I'm sure you have all kinds of meetings and all kinds of events to attend, but the concern that I'm seeing now is that, I was here last month at the school board meeting. I watched two presentations that took place at that meeting that passed today. So in a 30-day span of time, you were able to implement and approve whatever those presentation were, books, and, and these are money items that just went, right? So it's been a month of, since Deja's passing. And I'm sure you have tons of research and situations and incidents that have been reported of bullying that is clear and present in all of the schools in Newport News. And I get it, you're working on it, you're investigating it, you're thinking about it, whatever. But how long, as a citizen, as a parent, as a teacher, as a student, as a bus driver, how long is it that we need to wait to hear some action that is taking place? I think that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for, thank you all for everything you brought us tonight. And we will be back in touch with many of the speakers, particularly those who've had experiences that we need to follow up on. And we will be working through what we've heard. What I've come to realize here is, the work is never done, and we will continue working to address this. And I, I think that we've got a great superintendent, we've got a great group of people, and we're gonna be able to, we're gonna be able to make the community feel better about this, hopefully. All right. Thank you for coming tonight. We're, I think, next on our agenda, matters by the school board. I'll start tonight with Mr. Brown.
Sir, before I, I would just like to ask if we can have a timeframe? Is there a lot of flipped up answers, maybe of two or six weeks somewhere? Can we just have a timeframe?
I can't give you a timeframe now. I, I, we've heard a tremendous amount tonight, and you've already spoken. So we will work on this, and you will, you know, obviously your family will continue to, to be engaged, and you will hear from us. The superintendent will lead.
Two days, three days?
It's not two or three days, sir. We will, we will be working on this diligently. But thank you. Okay. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, so this, this has been a very. Trying and, and difficult year. And again, as others said, I want to express my condolences and, and deepest sympathies to the, to the Jones family. Very sorry for their loss. A loss that is felt very deeply by all of us on the board. And a very, this has been a very trying time for, I think, the whole school division to, to, to work through this tragedy. And I know that we're, we're working diligently towards making improvements and taking action. And, and I appreciate all the comments that were made this evening. I know I've written them all down, and I will be discussing those comments with the superintendent and with the rest of the board members to, to take action. So just to share with the public, in, in, in specific, we already have a, I call it a 10-point plan, because there are 10 points that are on our website. You guys can go and see these right now, if you do go to the Newport News Public School website. We do have student-led groups. We do have training for teachers. We do, we have essentially a summer school, training for teachers on safety and, and preempting negative behavior. Our Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, we revise that on a very consistent basis. That's third plank of the plan. We have a bullying prevention hotline. It's an anonymous line that all students can call. I was in Woodside High School earlier today. The, the hotline is posted very prominently in the main office. Every student can see it. They can call there and make an anonymous complaint about a bullying or a bullying situation. We have security officers at all the middle schools and high schools. We have security officers on a rotating basis at all the elementary schools. We have police officers available at the supports of students. We also have student assistance counselors at all the high schools, and we have cameras inside and outside all the middle schools and high schools, and we have cameras on all the buses. So that is our current, I call it our comprehensive 10-point plan that we have currently. And I welcome and appreciate any feedback from any of the citizens on which parts of that 10-point plan you'd like to see revamped up, improved, changed, modified, et cetera. Okay, but all that information, it's all on our website, has been there for, forever. And I would appreciate if you go there, look at it. You can contact me and let me know any parts of that plan that you find to be, you'd like to see improved or, or changed. And then finally, I do want to get to, you know, one of the, one of the events that I really enjoy within the, the community is gonna be the 200-plus men event. That's gonna happen later this month. That's one of the, the great events that we, that we get to involve with in Hampton Roads, where we see 200-plus young men who are graduating from high school with honors, moving on to college, and, and doing great things. I'm very encouraged by Ms. Mead having come back this evening, and also we had the student from Longwood University come back. Always very encouraging to see students who have done well, gone away, who've done well, come back and give us feedback on, on our school division and how well it prepared them and seeing them succeed in life. One such student that I'm very sorry that we did not get to, to wish her well, and this is why it's been a very difficult year for me, is Caleb Brevard. So Caleb- So Caleb Brevard, um, she died just, uh, last month, uh, lost her battle to cancer. Um, she was only twenty-two years old when she died. She was an alumni of Warwick High School, attended William &amp; Mary, and was just a, a shining beacon in our community. Uh, she received numerous honors and awards while she was at William &amp; Mary, was a resident advisor, joined a sorority, uh, was, you know, in all kinds of clubs and, and activities and, and doing great things, and had just received her bachelor's degree in psychology and was on her way to graduate school when, when cancer, um, uh, when she had her battle with cancer and then it eventually took her life. Uh, I mention that because, uh, out of this, we, we can, um, we can rise and move forward. The Brevard family, and I'm very grateful to be associated with the Brevard family in terms of, uh, knowing them and, and being friends with the Brevard family. They've established a scholarship in her name, in her honor. Uh, this year, they're funding the scholarship themselves, and it's going to be for a girl from Warwick High School to receive a thousand-dollar scholarship to go to college. They'll be awarding that scholarship in the June timeframe. Uh, by this time next year, they'll have established a, uh, a nonprofit foundation for people to be able to make tax-deductible donations to the scholarship fund, that Brevard Scholarship Fund, and it will go to a, a female student at Warwick High School to, uh, help with, um, defray college costs and expenses per scholarship. So, I, I mentioned that, uh, one, because I think it's a, it's a comment about the, the strength and the perseverance and the resourcefulness of our community, that a family experienced a great tragedy and they turned it into a, a great positive for the community. Uh, and I, I appreciate, um, the family and, and what they're doing and the example that they've, that they've laid. And I think that from the, the tragedy we've, we've, um, received here, uh, in regards to, uh, all the families that have, um, experienced hardship, that, uh, we can make improvements and, and we will be constructive and, and overcome.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Simons?
Um, I just want to, um, thank everyone in the administration for working so hard on the budget process. I'm really glad that we have put rebuilding Huntington back into the budget. I think that, uh, it's very important to have equity in our community with resources, and I think that Huntington needs to be addressed. And I would challenge everyone in the community to really think about our aging school buildings. We need to create a plan, and I know that, um, Dr. Kilgore and the administration is working on a plan for how we are going to replace our aging school buildings. Over half of our buildings are over fifty years old. Uh, we also rely on the state. Um, they should be providing construction funds for schools, and right now, they are not. They have taken all the money out of the state SOQs for construction. There's a little bit of money in the lottery for repairs. So we need to do some advocacy work as well at the state level to say, this is a serious need that we have across the state, and we need the state to be a participant in, um, building schools. And, you know, we did it in the nineteen-fifties. Everybody's talking about the glory days of, you know, the nineteen-fifties. Well, why can't we do it again? We built all those schools, um, you know, let's, let's pull together as a community, and let's tackle this very real problem that we have. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ashby?
Thank you, Chairman Stauter. My comments will be brief, but just want to thank all those that did come and speak this evening, and, um, the school board, and superintendent, and staff, just did not simply hear, but we listened. And I would share with people, there's a difference between hearing and listening. And we listen and absorb, and, um, advocate and affection for all of our children is evident in what we, what we attempt to do and what we try to do. So it's very, very important to understand that. Definitely my condolences to the family, and we'll keep them and uplift them, um, in prayer. I also wanted to say and share, want to thank, um, Aaliyah for coming. She's been working with me and going to be working with me for the next few Wednesdays, tutoring, um, because she was such an exceptional student, but she's been coming and tutoring and helping some middle school and high school, um, students at my church. In addition to that, I want to thank all of the reports. I totally agree in reference to our building and our capital improvement plan. Our children have to feel safe, they have to feel secure, they have to be in a building that is twenty-first century, wired and geared and built for them, because that is a huge thing. The setting and physicality of a building has a large amount to do with the success of children. Yes, relationships and instruction and best practices, but the, the physicality of a building has to do it, and that is just key component, because we know that our children have to succeed, and we want to prepare them to be successful in the twenty-first century. So again, thank you very much for the report and this board, and I know people in the community are going to be very supportive of us in reference to trying to get the funds to build, um, our schools and maintain the schools in our situation and setting also. I also want to say, um, I heard the superintendent talk about graduation. It needs to be shared that we are, um, graduating ninety percent of our students on time. On-time graduation rate is almost ninety percent. Our dropout rate is lower than three percent. So instruction, best practices, co- coaches in which we have, it's making a huge difference because the graduation rate is consistently going up, and that is just something that we should feel very good and feel very, very proud about. Um, I love the college career and citizenship skill set in reference to preparing our children. This is twenty-first century, so I heard problem solving, critical thinking, internal motivation, all those type of things are key elements for our children to build and develop. Yes, I made a mistake, but I can grow and develop from it. Or yes, I'm learning how to problem solve and critically think, and, um, I have a student success plan that I created, that I developed, so it's helping me to grow and to do well in school, but it's helping me to do well and excel in life in that situation and setting. Um, last two things I'd like to say and share is, um, we have some very talented children, um, in our school system. I took my young achievers to Menchville High School, um, to see Mary Poppins, and I am just awed how high school students can act. It is just, it is unbelievable, the phenomenal production that our students do in our situation setting. And then lastly, I'd like to say, um, early this afternoon, um, after leaving church, went to Achievable Dream and got to read to, uh, Ms. Kimberly Clements' class. We have some phenomenal things happening in our schools. Academic growth, yes, is happening, but I'm going to tell you, I sat in front of a, a, a group of first-grade students, um, today and read three books to them. Their attentiveness, their response, their response to questions, their application thinking, their cognitive thinking, their metacognitive, cognitive thinking was unbelievable. Their predicting skills was really very, very good. How they could analyze the story and do all those type of things was phenomenal. And that is what this is really about. Yes, accreditation has something to do with the success of our children, but looking at things in the totality and looking at the big picture, the thought processing in which I saw when I read those stories to those children, their responses was absolutely phenomenal. So that is just simply something that I think the entire, um, not only school system, but our Newport News community could feel very, very good about. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ashby. Uh, before I move on to Mr. Scott, I'm just going to remind all the board members, we, we're not finished, uh, and after this, we're going to continue our executive session, so...
Now, I can't make my ten minutes, huh?
Mr. Scott?
Scott.
Actually, Mr. Scott first, and then I'm going to go to, I'm going to go to Ms. Morgan.
Okay. Um, well, first of all, congratulations, Morgan, uh, Ms. Morgan. It's been a pleasure, just like all the other student advisors, having them here. Um, I, I think I've read or saw in the newspaper that, uh, Portsmouth City Schools are trying to implement the same system we have. They don't have a student advisor on their board, and it just goes to show that someone must be doing the right. We have our students here doing the right thing, and it helps. You know, it, that collaboration and what we, we need for everything, you know? We need a collaboration when we're dealing with the city. We need the collaboration when we're dealing with issues, whether it was considered, uh, bullies or changing items or anything. When we're dealing with our budget, everything is based off of collaboration. Um, if the board member and Dr. Kilgore are deciding on an issue, that's collaboration. It may be only a two-party, but at that time, but it's a collaboration. So the thing of, everything that we, that we brought up today and the, the thing that makes every engine go is the collaboration within the city. To get any problems really solved or issues, um, we just have to pull together and work it out, work on best practices. If it doesn't, uh, if it doesn't go through the first time, you know, you fall, you get back up, and you try again. Um, I'd like to thank all our presenters tonight. Um, I'd like to let people know, Mr. Webb has came out to town hall meetings, and he's, he's went over the capital plans or capital funding and capital projects that we've needed in the last couple of years. So for citizens not to know, or to the city council not to be aware, is, I, I don't want to say anything bad, but, uh, but, you know, but, we, we have people willing to share our information on what we need. Uh, we've been putting it out there before, this is not anything new. Um, we have aging schools, we just need collaboration with the city to provide us, uh, funding or to help us out or give us guidance on what we should do. Um, I love being here, I love being with the other board members. Um, I think we are doing all the right things, and, uh, for the new members who will be coming on, uh, congratulations to Marvin Harris, he's a friend, uh, I've, I've dealt with him for years, and I, I, I believe in the future, I will try to keep in contact with those coming on, Dr. Kilgore and, and I talk. And, um, basically, I'll continue to, you know, collaborate with you all. Just like Ms. Mead coming back will have this young lady coming back. That, that collaboration of that past and that present, just like as I was a student here, and just knowing the culture of the city, uh, helps out, and that's what we need to move forward and to make our system better. Thank you.
Ms. Ryan?
Ryan.
Is that why you selected UVA? So you could come back more often?
Yeah, yeah, that's why. Um, but no, I do think it's very important to set the trend on students coming back, giving their input, telling us what we can do better. I mean, there's always room for change, there's always room for improvement, and ha- to have students come back after they've gone through the whole experience and give their input and share their knowledge is a great thing. So I will be coming back, just like Aaliyah came back. Um, but I did want to talk about the Sage Expo that we had last month. It was a really great experience, and I'm excited to say that hopefully next year, we can have it maybe more than once a year. Um, they want us back, so that's a good first impression that we made. And then, um, we also, I also had a Virginia Star program last week. We had a ceremony where we, um, in our computer maintenance class at the STEM program in Heritage, we, um, fixed computers that were no longer working or had problems with them, and we refurbished them, and then we gave them back to the community to students who may not have a computer at home. And that's one, um, program that I wanted to share that we recently had, and it was a great experience to be able to give that back to the community as well.
Forty computers.
Hmm?
Forty.
Yeah, forty computers. So that was great, to give students. And we also gave other students, um, that are going off to college, like laptops that they could use to take with them and help them with their studies as well. And that's all I have to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Well, she also, uh, there, the students who have worked on the computers in construction are getting the training, uh, trade certification, so that they're certified to get jobs building and fixing on computers for the rest of their lives.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Well, thank you. Uh, I want to congratulate all those who gave reports tonight, and, um, you know, there's no need to spin this record. I would like to say that, if you don't stand for something, you fall for anything. So what we have to do is, we have, we, we, first of all, start with the budget. I want to thank the business department and leave Mrs. Rose So for bringing us the budget, and we are not apologizing for what we asked for, but we are upset that we're not getting what we need. And I think as long as I have breath in my body, I'm going to continue to say that to the city, and we, you know, there's no need to sit there and have a pity party. We need to talk to the people that can make a difference, and that's what I plan on doing. And certainly, I want to, Ms. Mead, would you like to take a minute of my time?
Uh, no.
If, if they will agree, you can have, speak a minute.
Oh, okay. Um, I just.
From right there, or you can come up there, so I can get you on TV.
We're going to do this once.
Oh, yeah. Okay, Mr. Hicks, well, hello, Dr. Kilgore, members of the board. Um, as you all know, I'm Aaliyah Mead, and it's an honor to be back and to, uh, see Ms. Ryan and to see everybody just back here, really, uh, continuing the legacy of greatness that, uh, I know is here in Newport News Public Schools. Um, hello, everybody else that I didn't see yet. Um, it's just an honor to be back, and I see that great things are continuing to hap- continuing to happen. Um, yes, there are challenges, I saw that today, that this year had some new challenges that I didn't get to confront myself last year as a student representative, and there will be more challenges, but I have no doubt that the board and the members of the community and the parents and the students will rise to those challenges and overcome. So thank you for your dedication to making this city great. Um, thank you for all that you've given to me, Ms. Ryan, and all the students, uh, in Newport News Public Schools, and, uh, that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Hicks.
Uh, you. Thank you, Mr. Hicks. That's a pretty good spokeswoman.
Yeah.
You got to sell your product.
Mr. Vice Chairman?
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we had kind of a slumber night today, but I want to tell you, there was great things happening in Newport News schools. So I want to end on a, a more positive note, uh, not to belittle, uh, the Joneses family and the suffering that they're doing. Uh, that being said, I do want to thank all the people who gave reports this evening. A special thanks to all of our Teachers of the Year, and especially congratulations to our Division in Middle School, uh, Teacher of the Year, Katie Morgan. Um, that's it, she's going to represent us. Um, and so if you saw her give her speech impromptu.
It was great.
Her impromptu, uh, speech was probably about ten minutes? Uh, but very, very, very enlightening. Um, now also, uh, would like to let you know that there are great things happening today. We heard about, just about all of our high schools today. We heard about Woodside and Warwick with the Odyssey of Minds. We heard about, we saw Mintfield with the state champions in swimming and diving. We heard about the new innovative things, they're coming over to, uh, Demby High School with the aviation. I mean, there are great things happening, and unfortunately, in, in this world that we live in, sometimes the bad things get all of the news.
Amen.
Right? We had news people here, why couldn't we get them here when we had tons of people getting all these awards all the time? This is what we be labor on, when we focus so much on this negativity that we see, we turn our televisions on, that we forget about all the greatness that this school system has, has brought us. Well, they come back, you know, even the students who are up here, the young student this morning so articulate, who led us in the pledge allegiance. You know, we forgot about that. But I, I didn't forget about it, because, you know, um, there, there were tough times for us, but I, let me tell you, we have to, we have to. So all of your parents out there, or your guardians, or grandparents of, of your child, I want you each day, I really want you each day to ask that young student, "How was your day?" That's what it starts with. "How was your day? What did you do?" If you don't start communicating now, I mean, this is how this bullying, bullying and fighting and fighting on the school buses start, because you fail to ask the question. I have two daughters that came and graduated through here. Guess what I do tonight? They're home from college. I'm going to ask them, "What'd you do today?" You step in bed, "What else did you do?" I'm going to ask them, "What else did you do today? Uh, did you read a book? Did you put your clothes away? Were you out seeking a job? Who did you talk to?" And I'm going to tell you, if you start that communication very early, and then we can handle it. You know, so schools, they do spend a lot of times here, the teachers are burdened with trying to educate, you know, a, a classroom that is in the twentieth century and not in the twenty-first century. And so those things become hindrance also for learning. So I just want to let you know today that Newport News, there are great things that are, are happening. There are great things that are happening, and we're going to continue to improve, you know, we've already hit the top, but you know what? Put a little more ice cream on top, you know, put a cherry sometime on it. That's all we're doing. We've heard all the comments, I'm glad they came out, uh, come out when they're, they're good things too, to let us know that's happening with our school system. And for the Channel Ten that was here, please come out again, we're doing graduations, and we have all these other awards, because the more good stuff that we hear, the more put a smile on your face. Mr. Chairman, just want to end on that good note.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. All right. We need to, um, now move back into our closed session and finish that up, and then we'll come back out to certify the closed session and adjourn the meeting. to certify the closed session and adjourn the meeting.